Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council, which is being held remotely in terms of Section 43 of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting, but if this is not possible, the Committee Services Officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on, your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the council and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries Deputy Lord Provost, so I'll now ask the Committee Services Officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Roger. I've had apologies from the Lord Provost. Councillor Alexander.
I'm here.
Councillor Anderson.
I'm here, good evening.
Deputy Lord Provost.
Present.
Bailey Dawson.
I'm here.
Councillor El Nakla.
Hi, I'm here.
Councillor Flynn.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Hunter.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lynn.
Present.
Bailey Roberts.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Rome.
Good evening, I'm here.
Bailey Sowers.
Yes, I'm here.
Councillor Short.
Good evening, here.
Councillor Smith.
I'm here.
Councillor Tolland.
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Councillor Crookshank.
Present.
Councillor Finnegan.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor McHugh.
Present.
Councillor McIrvin.
Present.
Councillor Malone.
Yeah, present here in body and mind.
Councillor Scullen.
Evening, I'm here.
Councillor Shears.
Apologies.
Thank you. Bailey Wright.
Present.
Bailey MacPherson.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Coleman.
Good evening.
Councillor Crichton.
Hi, I'm here.
Councillor Duncan.
Here.
Bailey Scott.
Here.
Thank you, that concludes the roll call.
Thank you Arlene, Roger, if you could take us back to the agenda please?
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. Deputy Lord Provost, members of the council, there are three items of business this evening. Item two, the minutes for information and record purposes.
Thank you, are these agreed? Right, we'll take Bailey Dawson first of all, I note your declaration there on item four, thank you, and Bailey MacPherson, you wish to come in?
Yeah, I do, a point of order in relation to tonight's committees. My group, not for the first time, has concerns about just the sheer volume of business in one evening, some nearly 1,200 pages for everybody to read, which is frankly preposterous. If I could point out that on the 28th of August, 11th of September, 18th of September, 2nd and 30th of October, 13th of November, 27th of November and 18th of December, these are all the dates from the summer recess to the recess at the festive period excluding the October recess, when we could have had a Monday meeting but didn't have a Monday meeting. Now, I'm just really wanting to ask the Chief Executive if he will give some further thought to looking at a little bit of a restructure of committee nights so that we can reduce the volume in one evening, because we all know what will happen, we'll reach the, what's it called, City Governance Committee and we'll be at the later items and no one will ask a question because it will be nine o'clock at night. So I would just really like the Chief Executive's comments on this, because I really don't think this is an acceptable volume of business for one evening.
Is the Chief Executive on the call?
Yes Deputy Lord Provost, I'm happy to consider Bailey MacPherson's suggestion about looking at other options. I would add one comment, that there are a large number of papers for the city governance meeting that relate to the audited accounts. The unaudited accounts have been through scrutiny in June, the audited accounts have been through scrutiny and were scrutinised by elected members. They account for, I think, just under 300 pages of those papers, but I'm happy to reflect on the agenda tonight and discuss with other officers within the council and then come back with my views on the suggestion that's been given tonight Deputy Lord Provost.
Could I just thank the Chief Executive for that helpful response? I would make the point, even if you deducted the 300 pages for the accounts, we're still talking about 900, and even then, I think like other members of the council, I make a point of reading right through everything on the basis that you should be prepared for council meetings. So I'm very grateful to the Chief Executive for his positive response and I'm sure we'll all hear further in due course. Thank you Deputy Lord Provost.
Thank you Bailey MacPherson. Bailey Keenan, you wish to comment?
Just to make a similar comment, obviously members of my own group have raised concerns of myself and the Chief Executive in relation to the volume of business. I get that a number of these arguments have been to scrutiny, but the scrutiny committee isn't responsible for all the scrutiny of council, and indeed that's the responsibility of all 29 councillors, and it's up to, you know, everyone should play their role in scrutinising the accounts and making sure that the citizens of Dundee are getting good value for money. But the sheer volume of business makes it very difficult, and indeed for new members, it's all right for those that know that the accounts come about three different times in unaudited, audited and whatever, but the sheer volume of business and the sheer number of papers is something that's a real concern, and I would welcome a review of that.
Thank you Bailey Keenan. Now, I know Bailey Dawson has commented in the chat about declaring an interest on L and CD, so I don't know if other councillors wish to do so, I know Councillor Malone has done so, and with those comments, are the minutes agreed? Thank you. Roger, if you could take us back to the agenda please?
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. That takes us to item three, general business appointments outside bodies. There are three outside bodies to which appointments require to be made, in each case relating to the Dundee partnership. First of all, the Child Poverty and Inequality Strategic Leadership Group, secondly, the Inclusive Economic Growth Strategic Leadership Group, and thirdly, the Climate Change/Net-Zero Strategic Leadership Group. There are two positions on each which will fall to be filled, one by the administration group and one by the major opposition group.
Bailey Dawson, I see you wish to comment?
Yeah, many thanks Deputy Lord Provost, just with regards to the administration appointments, the administration group will get back to officers after the meeting with names.
Thank you for that Bailey Dawson, so with that, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, Roger, if you could take us back to the agenda please?
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. The last item, item four, is Appointments Leisure and Culture Dundee Board. This is a confidential item and the council may wish to deal with it in the usual way.
Do we wish to deal with that in the usual way? So that is agreed, and that is the business of City Council, thank you very much.
Thank you Deputy Lord Provost. The next committee is the Climate, Environment and Biodiversity Committee.
Thank you Roger, I'd like to bring in Arlene to start our meeting. Thanks convener. Item one, declaration of interest, are there any declarations?
I can't see anyone, so I'll assume there are none.
Thank you. Item two, biodiversity duty report 21 to 23, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Thanks very much Arlene, I just wanted to make a comment here. I was lucky enough about a month ago to go to the 44th McCauley Lecture with Professor Johan Rockstrom, who was a scientist who did all the early work on planetary boundaries, and he, just two points from his lecture, one was he was making it very clear that keeping temperature increases to below, within 1.5 degrees isn't a target, it's a limit. So if we actually breach the 1.5, a whole set of other things start to go wrong with how the planet regulates itself, so it's just emphasising how important this work is. The other main point from his lecture was how much we have been dependent on nature and biodiversity to mitigate the damage so far, and basically saying we could only hope to keep all our systems working if we work very, very strongly to support biodiversity and nature, so just stressing the importance of this work. And I could see this point that Councillor Crookshank, Bailey Crookshank has got her hand up, do you wish to come in at this point Georgia?
Thanks convener, just to say I welcome this report and I thank officers for spending the time to respond to some of my comments, sorry.
Sorry Georgia, well I'll come back to you once we go through the recommendations, yeah, sorry, I thought, yeah. So it was just pointing out how important these two areas are, so I'm very pleased that we're having a duties report on both biodiversity and climate change, because they're two sides of the same coin. And I hope that I'll be here working with some of you over the next two days on the APSI training on climate change. So come to the biodiversity duty report, this covers a period from 2021 to 23, it will be the last report in this format, because there's a whole sort of blizzard of regulatory requirements that we're working within, so we basically had three key policy changes. Back in 22 at COP15, we had the new biodiversity framework, about like the Paris Agreement for climate, which set targets for global recovery by 2030. The second big lever was Scottish Government Biodiversity Strategy to 2045, which is asking us to halt biodiversity loss by 2030 and restore it by 2045. That involves nature network creation across Scotland and working to have 30% of our land and seas protected by 2030. And the third big change which affects us all every time we consider planning application are all the new requirements in NPF4 in relation to biodiversity. So there's a huge amount of new regulatory frameworks that we're working within, this is the last report in this format and it will change over the next year, but I'm very proud of this duties report. It highlights a very wide range of actions and progress over the last couple of years, 12 hectares of new woodland, 1.2 million campy growers investment, 3.3 hectares of wildflowers with Eden, hundreds of hours of volunteering and educational work and litter picking with our communities, and we've managed to keep our gold for the city, for Bonnie, beautiful Scotland and retain the Right Sustainability Trophy and win green flags. So just a lot of information in this report about all the work we've done, and I am now happy to open up for questions from members, so I'll come back to you Georgia.
Thanks convener, and sorry for the quick movement of my finger on this occasion. Just to welcome the report and thank the officers for taking the time to explain some of the queries that I had around it, I'm glad to see the reduction in the herbicide use to 65% over the last five years, and I hope that will continue to come down. I'm looking forward to the training for the next two days to enhance my knowledge and understanding of the biodiversity and environment, climate change etc. Thank you.
Thank you Georgia. Bailey Dawson, I'm just going to check, have you raised your hands in relation to this report or an earlier item?
No, that was City Council convener.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're now on to Councillor Crichton.
Yes, thanks convener. Just a question regards to page 15, it alludes to the allotment plots in the city. Can officers advise, given the number of people waiting on lists, and obviously me and Bailey MacPherson have had a load of emails since I've been elected certainly, about allotments and actually getting on, because I know there's only four allotment sites in the city, Antrim Road and Magen Green spring to mind, but how are we going to increase this, because obviously it's not just for people getting out, it helps mental health etc. And yeah, reading the report, obviously there's good things in it, but we need to do a lot more, and especially in terms of allotment provision and council use in our city. So yeah, just to ask officers what has been done to obviously help, because obviously there's a huge list of people waiting.
Okay, and you'll be aware of course of the 28 community growing projects, but I'll hand over to Mr Boyle to come in to respond to the question specifically on allotments.
Thanks convener, thanks Councillor Crichton. You're right, we've got 26 community growing projects as well as our allotments. What I would say to Councillor Crichton as well is we have got a number of private allotments as well as publicly managed allotments. We have been making a lot of progress in this area recently, and we're diversifying in terms of the offer we put out there, because I think we have all got the traditional understanding of an allotment, but we're now moving towards things like community growing. And recently and celebrated within the report is the significant progress that was made with the development of the Camper Down Growing Hub, which is managed in partnership, which again is a new model with the community, with the campy growers, where we've had significant success in getting that up and running over the period of the last three years. With specific regards to Councillor's Crichton's question about further development of allotments, I would have to go away and look at that convener, thanks.
Okay, so it might be worth checking waiting lists and seeing if we could offer people other opportunities if they want to move, but we'll come back to you on that.
Yes, I think there's going to be a range of options including community growing and allotments, and obviously there's private and public allotments, but we'll come back to Councillor Crichton specifically on that, thanks.
Thanks Tony. Councillor McIrvin.
Thanks Chair. Well, reference to page 26 of the report, it mentions the control of the giant hogweed. Now we've noted that there's been a 65 decrease in the herbicide. The question is, what are we using on the hogweed, is it the herbicide or something else?
I think I could come in there, but I'll get Mr Boyle to confirm, I think that's one of the few areas where we're still using herbicide, and I know that there's been ongoing work with Nature Scot to encourage more enforcement, but can I bring Mr Boyle in to confirm that I'm not talking nonsense?
Thanks convener, thanks Councillor McIrvin, we are indeed using glyphosate, carefully using that to do limited style treatment of non-ebays of weed species including giant hogweed.
Is that fine, Councillor McIrvin? Okay, and can I bring in Councillor Lynn? Ken Lynn?
Yeah, thanks convener, I just need to change my glasses to look at the screen, but I can't find the other one, so I'll keep these on. Yeah, it's just about the item, page nine about grassland. Tony Boyle will remember some time ago, I occupied, accompanied him on a walk around Baxter Park for a good hour, following representations that were made to me by constituents and their concerns about the biodiversity measures that were taken in the park, and they felt that this was neglect rather than management. Since that time, I'm absolutely delighted with what's happened in Baxter Park with in terms of biodiversity. I'm particularly pleased with the wildflowers that have been sown and bloomed for all through the summer and into the early autumn, so really, really delighted with Baxter Park now, and have received no further representations from constituents, which is unfortunate that you only ever hear when there's a complaint, but I'm sure there's a lot of people other than me that are really pleased. One remark that was made to me by the Friends of Baxter Park was they express a wee bit of concern that the wildflowers would be strangled, I don't know if that's a word they used, but something like that, by the non-wildflower growth alongside, and that this would require some additional management to enable the wildflowers to bloom again next year and in subsequent years. I wonder if you could confirm that that will take place Tony?
Thanks convener, thanks Councillor Lynn, and thank you very much for the kind comments. I'll pass it on to officers, yeah, I mean, there's intensive management goes on as well as the sowing of the wildflower bedos themselves, that includes a couple of cuts during the year. In terms of some of the other competitive aggressive colonisers such as dachshund, yeah, we've got to do some selective control of that and I can give an assurance that that will be organised.
I'll pass that on, thanks very much Tony.
You'd be glad to know that when I read the report, I found out that yellow rattle is a parasitic plant which actually attacks the grasses and helps the wildflowers, so the plants are also working on our behalf there, Councillor Lynn. And I'm going to bring in Bailey Dawson.
Thanks convener, I'm not sure if Tony will be able to answer this one tonight, but it's one that I've just actually thought of in relation to the Dichty Restoration Project. Obviously with the extreme storms we've had recently, there has been a lot of degradation of the banks and areas along the Dichty as well as the flooding that we've seen. Is that going to provide you with any problems, I suppose Tony, in relation to that actual project considering the amount of damage that may have been caused during the last couple of events that we've had?
Mr Boyle, if you want to come in on that, I know that we've had conversations about reviewing the plans, but.
Yeah, thanks convener, thanks Councillor Dawson, this is an issue that's taken up quite a lot of our time just now, and obviously post storm Babat, we're working closely with the city engineers charting the development and how we actually manage this issue around the Dichty. We're actually looking at a supported project with SEPA, who are working with city engineers and my own team to try and resolve some of these issues, and it will take a longer term project to actually come up with some of the actual detailed solutions, which I suspect that Councillor Dawson is looking for some of the detail of, and I'll come back to him at a future date with that detail.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine Tony, thanks. Now, I didn't think you'd have the detail, I was just wondering if it's going to give you any more problems, but no, again, thanks to you and your team and also the city engineers for the prompt responses after the storm, it's well appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, I can't see any more questions, I just want to congratulate the team on all the work that they've done, all the awards that they've supported the communities to win, just thought this was a very clear concise report and hope that the committee are happy to approve it for submission. Can't see anyone dissenting, so we'll take that as agreed. Arlene.
Thank you, that takes us on to item three, Public Bodies Climate Change Duties Annual Report 2223, you're asked to agree the recommendations.
Okay, so again, I know that we had 12,000, 1,200 pages, it felt like 12,000 pages for this evening, this was also a very dense, thorough, detailed, you know, careful report. I'm very glad to report that we have further reduced our scope one and two emissions by 13.6% over the last year, and that brings our total reductions in the council's carbon footprint to 56.4% on the baseline year. So we are very much making the progress that we had hoped to, we're on target, but we're also very conscious that everything else is going to be more difficult as we've done all the easy stuff. I just wanted to also take this moment to make sure that the committee was fully aware that Dundee has been awarded A status, been ranked as an A by the Carbon Disclosure Project in the last sort of few days. So the Carbon Disclosure Project works with cities globally to get information from them about how they aim to mitigate and adapt to climate change, how they use science and how transparent they are on the work that they do. Last year, only Dundee and Edinburgh received A status, and this year we're joined by Perth, so we're one, that's three Scottish cities, Dundee's one of them, and we're one of only 119 cities across the globe to be listed, so it's a real achievement. I want to congratulate the Climate Sustainability Team for all the work they did in completing those returns. In terms of the actual reporting on the duties, you will see that it's very thorough, it's highlighted concerns about gas consumption and how we mitigate that over the coming years, but it's basically been submitted to you here for approval and submission. I don't know if Mr Press would like to come in and say any additional point, raise any additional points at this stage, or whether you're happy to just go for questions, Robin?
Apologies Chair, no, I'm very happy with that summary, I think it is an excellent, very thorough document, I think it needs to be read in partnership with the following item on the agenda, because there is an element of crossover and they're both statutory Scottish Government duties, but I appreciate your comments about the team, there are two members of the team joining the call tonight, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, we have a question from Bailey MacPherson.
Thanks convener, and could I concur with you in relation to the detail and thoroughness of this report and thank the officers for what must have been an extensive amount of work to put together. My question's about a point on page 63 in relation to the waste sector, and it indicates that there has been a, what I think is almost implodibly high, but nonetheless I'm sure accurate, decrease in emissions from waste compared to the previous year of some 22%. Having a almost quarter of your emissions from waste decrease in a year is almost incredible, were it not for the fact that there is a good explanation for that in relation to underlining that I think this council took a very wise decision in relation to the replacement energy from waste plant project some time ago. My question really for officers is, is the vast bulk, you know, what of the 22% decrease in emissions from waste is directly as a result of the fact that the incinerated bottom ash can now be recycled rather than landfillled? And will this level of decrease be maintained in future years, I assume so, it'd be useful to know, and if some of the 22% decrease is not through the change in relation to our energy from waste plant, are there other steps that we can be taking to further reduce emissions from waste in future years?
Thank you Bailey MacPherson, do I go to Mr Boyle to respond to that, Robin? Yes.
Thanks convener, thanks Bailey MacPherson. Short answer is I'll have to look into the detail of what Bailey MacPherson's asking for there, but in specific regards to the incinerator bottom ash, bottom ash, sorry, Bailey MacPherson is correct in that the metal contact content within that has now been contributing towards overall recycling rate, so that definitely has a bearing on things, but if you could please allow me to go away and ask the questions of officers, we'll get a detailed response to Bailey MacPherson.
That would be very helpful, thanks indeed.
Okay, thank you very much Bailey MacPherson, the other point that I've been trying to get to the bottom of, you will see in the report that we've managed to reduce our emissions because we've offset the energy use for the LED lights against renewable energy, and I basically, from my understanding, the percentage of renewable energy that we use is being allocated against the use by the LED lights, and I've been advised by officers that we will be reviewing our energy suppliers in 2024, so the hope is that if we can have all of our energy in. we can have all of our energy sourced through renewable energy, that would actually help our emissions in terms of offsetting. So we've managed to get a win this year, but it's something that we need to look at going forward, so that any energy used for refuelling electric vehicles isn't coming across as a liability. It's something that can be offset against renewable energy. So I can't see any more questions. I take it that people are happy for this duties report to be submitted. And thank the team for all that number crunching and all that work. Arlene.
Thanks. That takes us to item four, Dundee City Council Net Zero Transition Plan. You have this for approval.
Okay. So basically, the Scottish Government's heat in building strategy sets a target for all buildings, including public sector, non-domestic buildings, to be net zero by 2038. So it's a target that we are compelled to meet. This report essentially outlines our strategy across each service area about how we're going to meet that target. Again, it's very demanding. And we know that 54% of our emissions in 2020 came from the use of heat in our buildings, mainly gas. So we know that we've got our work cut out here, and this paper basically outlines our strategy for tackling the challenge ahead. I can see that there are questions. So can I bring in councillor Duncan first, please?
Yeah, thanks, Cunavina. Just a quick question. I was pleased to see on page 158 a welcome mention of the eco schools in Dundee. I'm certainly in my own ward, I'm certainly very well aware of the good work that's been going on at Grove Academy. They've got a well-established and very active eco group, which is a real credit to the school and the deed awards. And I note in the report that there's an aspiration to engage all Dundee schools. So I'm really just asking, how many of our schools in Dundee are, if you can say, eco schools, and what steps are being taken to build on this, or bringing in those who perhaps are not already?
Thank you, councillor Duncan. Robin, is that a question you can respond to, or would that be?
It isn't what I can respond to. We were doing a Barbara and Naomi from the team here, and I suspect that one of them may be able to answer. So Barbara, Naomi, can you answer that, or should we take it offline and come back with the response separately?
If it's okay, councillor, we will take that offline and just double check, because we can't give you the exact number of schools that are part of the Eco Schools programme. But we do know that obviously this is a proactive drive, and that we have dedicated Eco Schools coordinators now. And my team is supporting them with, has been supporting them historically with schools packs.
Okay, I'm more than happy with that. I mean, the main purpose of it was we would just highlight something which is a wee positive project. So by all means, yeah, have a look and come back offline. Thanks.
I can see that Mrs. May has come on screen. Do you want to interject here and clear up the mystery, Audrey, or are you happy?
Thank you, Cunavina. No, I don't have the numbers to hand, but just to support what's just been said, that, you know, as part of the overall approach in the city, looking at climate challenges, that there's great resources being developed by the team working with schools. And it would be our expectation that all schools are looking at where they are on that journey and continue to make it a priority in the plans. But we could get details for you and bring that back.
Thank you. I could see that we've got a question from councillor Malone.
Thank you, Cunavina. I concur with your points about the challenges that we face in terms of housing and the carbon emission from our housing stock. As somebody who represents a ward where we've got a lot of ageing occupation in terms of the build of the residents, and I've been to visit people, I think the occurrence of damp is appalling. But I also think that the windows, and the reason why I think so much is being spent on heating, is because the windows are not fit for purpose. We're still talking about single-glazed windows with metal frames, and people getting up in the morning to water on the window sill. So I think you're right, Heather. I think we do need to take this on board, but we need to recognise that this is a multi-agency response that's required. And if there's anything I could contribute, I'm more than happy to contribute to it. But the experience of the people that I visit, and councillor Scullin has visited, we've visited people where they've got fungi growing in their house. And that is not conducive with any kind of sustainable housing. And if we are going to have sustainable housing, I think we have to look and audit where we are just now, in terms of the challenges facing our citizens, and then think about moving forward. I agree, the timeline's very tight, but I'd be more than happy to sit down with anybody and explain my experience as an elected member.
Thank you, councillor Malone. This specific strategy, this plan is about our non-domestic buildings. So it's about our offices, our estate, our swimming pools, our community centres. But I do know that there's a lot of work going on within housing, and that they're developing their sector strategy about, you know, external wall insulation, retrofitting. Yeah, so we're very conscious that it's an enormous agenda. And I just wanted to propose an additional recommendation. So you will see that the committee is asked to approve the targets in the plan, to approve the carbon accounting process proposed in the plan, and note that the council leadership team will monitor implementation of the plan. I'm wishing to propose an additional recommendation, D, that they report back progress to this committee on an annual basis, just in recognition about how important this work is and how we have to keep on top of the Gantt charts and the plans and the strategies to make sure that we are making progress. So I'm seeking a secondaire for the proposal to report back progress to the committee on an annual basis. Sorry, councillor Malone, was that you coming in to?
No, no, no. Well, certainly, any time we get report back to committees is valuable. So setting timelines, I think, is important. So I would, I don't, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the Labour Group. I don't think there's anything that we'd find that was objectionable in that. My comment was really to come back to the non-domestic element of this. I understand that, okay? I absolutely understand that. But there's no point of us having a strategy that looks at non-domestic issues in terms of carbon emission, while we've got huge problems within our own rented accommodation sector in particular, and the need to recognise that as part, an inclusive part of the proposal going forward. Because I don't want, I'm not lecturing you, Heather, but.
No, councillor Malone, it wasn't to suggest that it wasn't important. It's vitally important.
No, no, no.
But this report is about what we are required to report on. Yeah.
I know. And but what I'm saying is that the carbon emissions don't stop.
No.
You know, so I just think, I just wanted to make the point that we need to address some of these issues as well as trying to meet what are quite ambitious targets. For me, there's just a bigger challenge, and that's the point I was trying to make.
Thank you. I can see that I have got a number of secondaires. I'll take councillor Flynn for my fourth recommendation. Can I take it that this report is agreed as approved and amended in terms of the recommendations? Thank you.
Got a question for officers, Heather.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Mark, I didn't see that. Councillor Flynn, come in.
Okay. I see from the report, very good report, very detailed report, as per the previous one, and I read in conjunction, they are excellent. Can I just get some comment from the officers on the reduction in CO2? It's very linear. I just want to know if that's realistically achievable, and maybe some officer feedback on that, please. And also our secondaire amendment. Absolutely delighted to have this report come back on an annual basis to elected members to interview.
Okay, can I bring in Mr. Presswood on the sort of very regular reduction in that graph, which also concerned me, but.
Chair, many thanks. I think this is the graph on page 16 of the report itself. I think what you see there is an annual reduction to the target date for net zero. And clearly, as that happens, we'll see higher than average performance, we'll see lower than average performance. I think this is simply indicative, showing us what the route to net zero looks like. But as we update that on an annual basis, I'm sure we'll see that it becomes much more of a wobbly line than a straight line.
I would certainly, I would certainly expect that. I'm sure councillor Flynn does too. So thank you. I think the report is agreed, and I think that's the business for this committee this evening. Thank you for everyone's interest and questions.
Thank you, Cunavina. The next committee is the Fair Work Economic Growth and Infrastructure Committee.
Okay, well, good evening and welcome to the committee that Mr. Menni just outlined. Arlene, can you start us off, please?
Thanks, Cunavina. Item one, declaration of interest. Are there any declarations?
So I see one declaration from councillor Crichton. Would you like to speak to that, councillor Crichton?
Yes, thank you, Cunavina. It's just a declaration to say that on item three, a close family relative has, is the author in the report.
Thank you, councillor Crichton. That's noted. Do we have any other? No. Okay, we'll move on then, please.
Thanks. Item two, event strategy, 23 to 28. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this report seeks approval of the event strategy that will cover a five-year period. The report recognises the significant economic and social impact that events can have, and sets how the city will work collaboratively with a range of others to support a diverse programme of activities throughout the calendar year. And you may have seen some press earlier regarding the works that the administration has already done in terms of working with local businesses in order to get the best possible promotion and support for events, and indeed, everything to do with site promotion going forward. I see we have a number of questions, and I'll take councillor Coleman first.
Thank you, Mr. Cunavina. My question is around the contraction of Winterfest this year. The first many elected members were advised, of which was via the local press. Can I ask of this resiting, axing of the ice shrink and the big wheel, and the reduction in the overall length of the Winterfest was actually discussed with the council before events decided to do this? And is it related to the fact that the council axed support for Winterfest, which I understand was £30,000 in 2021 and £20,000 last year?
Thanks for your question, councillor Coleman. It's quite a detailed situation, as you can imagine, but in terms of this, this was a commercial event. And I'm going to be bringing Mr. Hamilton to give a bit more detail around the specific timeframe of how things have happened. But as you'll be aware, this came to tender a few years ago, and the timeline for the spend on this event has been clearly set out for the last three years. But I'll bring in Mr. Hamilton, this juncture.
Thank you, Cunavina. It is the case that we had dialogue with Winterfest in recent months regarding the offer that they were proposing. I think the experience that they had during October, when the wheel was in Sletter Gardens, led in part to the decision not to progress with anything in Sletter Gardens over the winter period. But there is still a proposal that there is a more modest offer within the city centre, closer to where the council's activities themselves will be based. I think in terms of the financial aspect, we were clear from the outset that the support would only be available for Winterfest in the first two years. The tender was offered on a one-year plus one-year plus one-year basis. So the third year, which is 2023, was never going to have financial support from the council. And I'm not sure the extent to which that would have made a difference. But the funding wasn't withdrawn. It was always the case that from the outset, there would be no financial contribution from the council in the third year. The hope was that it would have been a sustainable event that wouldn't require public subsidy as it progressed.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Does that answer your question, councillor Coleman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cunavina.
Thank you. We'll obviously come back to your amendment later on, but I'll take councillor Scullin then, please.
Hi there. Sorry, I have to bear with me. I've got tonsillitis.
Oh, dear.
Firstly, I'd like to pay tribute to the communities and the community workers who organise so many of these fantastic events in this strategy. But I feel like this paper's more of a pitch to people to hold events in the city, rather than the strategy I think that we all were promised. So I was wondering, when will we have a calendar of council-hosted events that we can begin to help promote to locals and tourists?
Mr. Hamilton?
Cunavina, the strategy seeks to set out how the council supports events. And there's a multiple, or multiple ways in which the events team achieves that. So partly, it is through organising and delivering events by the council itself. And members will recall the Summer Streets Festival in 2022, the regular Christmas activities that the council itself provides in city square. So there's that element to it. There is working with the community organisations, and we fully recognise that they enliven the city and communities throughout the calendar year, and working with volunteers and others is an important way that the strategy will be delivered. But there's also a recognition that, looking ahead, we do want to work with others who can bring events to the city and be what we're calling welcoming hosts. So we engage through both the formal processes of the Safety Advisory Group that ensures health and safety at events, but also that we are welcoming, we promote the various spaces across the city. So the strategy is very much trying to move forward on all fronts to ensure that that calendar activity from January through to December, with a variety of different offers that will appeal to everyone in Dundee, is what we achieve through the work of the events team.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Does that answer your question, councillor Scullin?
It answers my question, but I still feel like there's a lot of words in the event strategy without actually saying very much. Personally, I was expecting a lot more, especially actually mentioning future events. When it comes to Christmas especially, I think our offering is pretty poor compared to other cities around us. I just think that I was expecting a lot more.
Okay, thank you, councillor Scullin. I think what we need to bear in mind is that the current design of events in the city centre is based around getting the maximum enjoyment and the maximum benefit to both families and individuals in the city centre, but also businesses in the city centre. Rather than one-off events, it is designed around maximising that experience. It's obviously extremely disappointing that there's a reduced commercial offer, sorry, if I can get that out, in the city centre. But obviously, the council's offer continues, which is free support and free entertainment for families during a cost of living crisis. And I think that's really fundamental, that we've done that this year in the scaled-down commercial offer, or even regardless. But I think we'll see further details coming forward. I can see that councillor Duncan, you're looking to second councillor Coleman's amendment. Do you have a question as well, or would you prefer just doing the second thing, and shall I move on?
No, Cunavina, I'd just wait and I'll do the second thing. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, councillor Duncan. I wonder if this junction committee services could share the amendment, if that's all right, councillor Coleman, and we'll move on in the meantime?
Cunavina, I would like to make a comment before you go forward.
I can see you want to make a comment, Bailey Keenan, but I've got other questions beforehand. So I'll bring councillor Alexander, then yourself. Councillor Alexander?
Thanks very much, Cunavina. And I think the key from this document is that it showcases what we've managed to achieve during one of the toughest financial years that this council has ever faced. So I think, first of all, I want to commend the very, very small events team for the widespread support and activity that they've undertaken, because of course, I think it's absolutely right to commend the communities that have put on a wide array of events. But of course, I think we need to recognise that they don't do that in isolation. They do that with the support of communities officers, but they also do that with the support of the events team. And they do it with the support of finance from the council. Because of course, whether that's funding that comes through CRF, the Dundee Partnership, or whether it's through activities like the festive fund, that is funding that has been provided by Dundee City Council, because we very much see that role of enabling events and activities to take place in a variety of different forms. It's also really important to highlight some of the huge events that have taken place in the last 12 months. The Big Weekend, the UCI Cycling Championships, one of the largest sporting events in the world, and of course, the Karate World Championships, all supported in a very tangible way by the work of the council. So whilst I agree actually with colleagues, I would always like to do more. And members of the administration know that we're always talking about what more we could do, because the ambitions for all of us are incredibly. that we're always talking about what more we could do, because the ambitions for all of us are incredibly high, whether that be related to Christmas or anything else for that matter. I'd always like to see a much wider offer, a much enhanced offer. But it always comes down to how much finance is available, of course. And I think we also need to recognise that in order to do the things perhaps that colleagues have suggested, then in order to do that, it will require more resource. And councillor Scullin is right to highlight that we'd like to do more, and she mentions that she's disappointed with the offer. Well, in order to address that, you need to find resource to support it. It's not helpful, I think, for any of us to just say it's not good enough without actually offering where it might come from, because at this point in time, we don't necessarily have it. So to the point that I would like to make in terms of a question to officers, convener, sorry. In terms of that wider support, I think it's really vital that we see this as the council, again, as a convening power and an enabler. We've worked really collaboratively in the past with agencies of national government, but also that question about local business support. So can I just ask officers to confirm that throughout the course of the year, no matter what the event, whether it's the Summer Streets Festival or whether it's Christmas, that they are proactive in looking at those opportunities to leverage in funding? Because I think what's more important for all of us is that we maximise public resource at this point in time. So if we can put in a pound but generate a pound from the private sector or wherever it may come from, then clearly that goes to the point of trying to enhance the offer, and I just want to make sure that officers are proactive in that.
Mr. Hamilton?
Mina, yes, I can confirm that that is the case. I think we work very closely with colleagues in Events Scotland and have secured support from various funds that they have for events in the city, including the Big Weekend earlier this year, but also in the past, some of the activities at Christmas and during the Summer Streets Festival. I think we also work with private business to try and bring in additional resource. That is challenging. I think we need to be honest about that, but it doesn't stop us from making efforts to try and ensure that we can deliver the best events possible for Dundee within the budget that we have available.
Thank you for that. I'm sure that clarity is appreciated. I think finance is obviously the major one for everyone, and I think we need to be very careful about ongoing commitments. I mean, I'm sure all of us would like to see many of these things come back, have a fantastic offering, but I think there needs to be some realism, and any choice that we make in terms of the city centre offer is going to mean cuts elsewhere. And let's just, as I say, be realistic about this. We're going into a very difficult budget situation of twenty million pounds of savings needed to be made. And what we're talking about is potentially adding to that burden in the years going forward. So there are significant pressures in terms of this. The event budget for Christmas is currently ninety-two thousand pounds. The past event budget for fireworks was fifty-two thousand pounds. Now, going forward, obviously, we have to deal with inflation as well. I would imagine neither of those allocations will be sufficient going forward. So everything needs to be considered in the round, I'd say, and I think we all need to be cognisant of that. But I'll bring in Bailey Keenan at this point. Bailey Keenan?
Thanks, convener. Convener, like councillor Scullin, I'm really disappointed in the fact that we haven't got some level of what our council prepared to do. Given that the report was called for by the leader of the council, I expected there to be a considerable amount more on what Dundee's offering would be. And I think in actually putting up that offering and putting it up well enough in advance where people know that it's happening, might see that attraction of others looking to invest in that particular event. So as the event becomes much bigger. So I think there is, we've missed an opportunity. I think officers could still issue what council is prepared to do, what events they're supporting over the next year. But, you know, bleating on about, you know, we've only got ninety-two thousand. We just spent money on a convener's approval for an event strategy, for an event just in the last committee meetings. I actually thought it was a bit of fun, we officers spending the money before the convener, before you brought forward the event strategy that the leader of the council called for. I thought it was quite hilarious that you would put up an events thing before that. But however, that's what you've managed to do as an administration, and then you bleed on, there's no money to do anything. You built up expectation and you've let people down. So, you know, shame on you. You should issue what councillor Scullin's asking for.
Okay, thank you for your contributions, I was Bailey Keenan. I didn't understand all the points in there, but I'm just going to move on, I think. Councillor Short, please.
Thank you, convener. And I'm not going to take all the glory for this, because I was only in it about the last five weeks, but can I pay tribute to Dundee Pride? And we were a bit worried last year because we came on the back of the BBC Big Weekend and West Fest, which were huge massive organised events across the city. And then here was the Dundee Pride, basically a board of six people. And I think we brought off a fantastic event in Sleser Gardens over two days. The weather didn't really play the game on the second day, but as elected members, to be actually involved in these exciting events is really cool. And being able to work with our communities to help them to pull off what they want to do. Again, very fortunate to be able to be at the Karate World Cup opening event, which was quite phenomenal. So all these things that are happening around us have been really excellent. And I guess hopefully that what we'll have here in this strategy is a declaration that we are open for business. And I know lots of community groups have been coming to me about what they'd like to do going forwards. And if they get the right support, which they seem to do, à la Dundee Pride, then hopefully it won't necessarily have to be the council being your mum. It's just that the council will be there to support you all the way through your event. And Dundee will be seen as that place on the map where people want to invest. And certainly, already the cash are talking about coming back and supporting Dundee Pride again. They had such a great time. So thank you for all the support that went into that. And hopefully, apparently we can't get the date we did want because Taylor Swift is happening this year, next year. But we'll certainly have something for Dundee Pride next year that hopefully we can all be proud of. Thank you, convener.
Thank you, councillor Short, for that contribution. Councillor Nakla, you have a question?
Yeah, hi, Ron. So I, I'm born and bred in Dundee, raised here, grew up with the fireworks, grew up with kind of the launch of the lighting of the Christmas decorations and things like that. But interestingly, my daughter was saying to me that actually with the Christmas last year, she was able to go again and again and again. And it wasn't just like a one-off event. It was something that her and her friends were actively going to at the weekend, and it actually didn't cost them any money. So I was thinking, and I'm sure it's in this report, but this report is really, really long. But it's that kind of, so it got me thinking more about the time. Did we have these one-off events that did cost more money and people did enjoy? But actually, the amount of time spent at a twenty-minute firework substituting for actually we're having, you know, the hooly, which where people are taking two hours, like, do we have those figures a bit clearer in my mind, so I can kind of see if my daughter's ready or not? Because as well, it's all, we're talking about getting to net zero and reducing carbon. And to do that, we have to start to do things differently. So fireworks would be one thing that we are doing differently. But yeah, if someone could point out to me if those numbers are in the report, that would be great.
Thank you, councillor Nakla. Bringing Mr. Hamilton at this juncture, I believe I'm correct in saying that the money had previously been used on fireworks that have been put into our Christmas budget. So as you say, in terms of that time spent and the value of that time spent, I think in terms of the Christmas offering, which is a free-to-use offer in the city centre, that gets significantly more value for that money spent. We'll ask Mr. Hamilton to confirm, please.
Thank you, convener. And there was a report that came to the former City Development Committee, I think it was in twenty-twenty, where a different approach towards Christmas was set out. And part of that proposal was not having the Christmas lights switch on that historically had taken place within Dundee. But it was moving towards an extended programme of activities between the end of November and Christmas Day in the city centre. Part of that was because some of the rising costs of the big switch-on event and concerns about just the number of people that would gather in the city square for that one moment. But it was also in part to try and ensure that people kept coming back into the city centre in that crucial period for businesses in the city centre in the lead-up to Christmas. And as part of the regular monitoring that we do of the Christmas activities, we do gather the number of visitors that come to the activities in City Square. And over the period of weeks during twenty-twenty-two, there were more people that visited City Square than we would expect to see on that one night when the Christmas lights switch on happened. So I think from that perspective, has that extended, drawn-out impact that benefits business? And I think crucially, the point you make about activities that the council puts on in the city square being free, so there is no barrier to people participating in those council activities. The decision about fireworks was made partly for financial reasons, but partly it was the challenge of Baxter Park and concerns about the ability of Baxter Park to host an event of the scale that we had seen and the difficulty of finding another suitable venue in the city. But that was a matter that was considered by committee. From memory, I think that was in twenty-twenty-two. But that decision was made then.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. I'm keen to move on now, but I'll ask councillor Coleman to speak to his amendment, and seconded by councillor Duncan. Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Convener. My group's amendment is straightforward and based on the feedback from many, many constituents who regret the removal of the traditional Christmas tree in the city square and feel that the so-called living Christmas tree is not adequate replacement. As we indeed know, the first living tree was dead within nine months, and the new one is frankly a really poor substitute for the traditional civic tree in the city square that always attracted numerous compliments from the public. Anyone arguing otherwise that the one now is a suitable replacement, in my opinion, is frankly trying to keep up appearances. We are proposing that officers look at the viability of moving the tree back to the city square next year and in subsequent years. Separately, we would also like officers to look at the viability of restoring the traditional firework displays in the city that have been axed, and it was said at the time that the door was not closed on their return forever. For years, the City Council, Police Scotland and the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service repeated the mantra in Dundee that Dundee citizens should go to public displays rather than handling fireworks, which can be dangerous at their own private displays. And our group think that this would be good advice and we should restore public displays going forward. Additionally, it leads to, it adds to the sense of community across the city. And it would make sense to look at the viability of restructuring the events expenditure to accommodate this. We think that a fully detailed and cost-effective options report should be brought back to committee by the end of March so that we can look at this. I hope we could take what I think is a reasonable decision across the chamber to explore viability. I'm not trying to mandate to return these things by this amendment, but simply asking that we have an open mind and explore all options. Thank you, Mr. Convener.
Councillor Duncan?
Thanks, convener. I couldn't hear you there for some reason.
I may be a bit, I apologize.
Oh, no, no worries. That happens, that's all. In seconding councillor Coleman, I'd just like to begin by saying that moving the Christmas tree back to the city square, the traditional place where it always was, I think we're probably all aware that money notwithstanding etc, it would be a move that would be very well received by the hard-pressed Dundee public. I think that the placement city church's so-called living tree, which as councillor Coleman alluded to, met with an unfortunate fate when it gave up the ghost. It's something a bit, you know, as far as the public are concerned, a bit of a damp squib with the Dundee public. I think equally the axing of, again, the traditional fireworks display hasn't gone down well. I think it's, money is tight and we all know that, and it's tight, of course, for many, many poor families in Dundee who enjoyed frankly the night out of going to the Christmas tree lights switch on, the kind of buzz, the vibe you get from it, the countdown, all that kind of stuff. Equally, the fireworks, again, one could say, oh, it's a lot of money for twenty minutes. But that's a spectacle that will stay with particularly young people for a long time. It's exciting, you know? So I think it's worth taking that perspective on these events. And at this stage, all we're seeking is that, you know, the possibilities are properly teased out with costed options. I think that's an entirely reasonable approach. And as for the, as I would have the council mentioned, resources, yeah, there's certainly more than one way to skin a cat, you know, and representing Broughty Ferry as I do, last Thursday, thanks to the Broughty Ferry traders, we heard yet another very successful and enthusiastic Christmas light switch on. I can guarantee you, that's very, very well attended every single year. The atmosphere's brilliant. The traders do know a thing or two about business, which is why they're still in business and also why they do these things. So I think maybe take a leaf out of their book, there may be other ways. All I'm saying is there may be other ways in Dundee city centre of perhaps drawing in additional finance to what the public purse could come up with. So on that basis and, you know, asking officers to consider what we've been saying, I'm very happy to second councillor Coleman.
Thank you for that, councillor Duncan. I'm aware that I did say we're moving towards the formal stage, but I can see that both councillor Malone and councillor Nakla have a comment and a question. So I'll allow you to come in at this stage and then after that, I think we'll have a short recess for five minutes just to consider things before we proceed to the vote. So councillor Malone, please.
Thank you for allowing me to come in. I thought that was my role as an elected representative, but we'll move on. I don't see anything in this report that's really controversial. I don't think we probably, I don't think we do need it, you know, a break to consider it. This is a document that's asking for a document to come forward that gives due consideration to some of the questions that have been raised by constituents and probably every word. I see nothing in this that's contentious. It's asking for consideration of the viability of a range of options. And I just can't for the life of me see any reason why we would need to have a break to discuss that.
Thank you, councillor Moore, for your comment and your view. Councillor Nakla?
Yeah, just a question for councillor Coleman. In your suggestion of the having the Christmas light switch on, would that be instead of the community ones in Lochie, West End and Broughty Ferry and just having one? So we'd take those three away and just have one? Or was it the suggestion of removing another event so that that one would take place? Because although, you know, Dundee has money and we have what we mentioned over ninety thousand, I guess it's balance and that. So I just wondered what your proposal, just a little bit more detail, really.
And councillor Nakla, you know, I appreciate the exact point about resources, but I think we can ask officers and their opinion at this stage. I don't think we can ask councillor Coleman to answer that. So I make that ten past six, so I'm going to move to a recess until quarter past six and we'll come and move to the vote. Thank you. Thank you. Just in the interest of everyone having the fair say, Bailey version, I believe you had a comment. I don't know if it's still relevant. If you want to come back in before we move to formal vote, please do so.
Thanks, convener. My point really was, I was a little bit concerned by the protocol really, because to be honest, we're not at a public hustings where someone can in the formal position start questioning other members. But I will make the point, we are not suggesting for a minute that somehow or other community Christmas events, such as Broughty Ferry, the West End and Lochie, and I declare an interest in that because I chaired the West End Christmas Committee, should end. In fact, I think it's useful just to make clear that the amount of public funding that actually goes into that is tiny in relation to the two-hundred-and-six-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty that will be spent this year in relation to the city centre. I'm not criticising the imbalance. There's good reason why you would spend money on the city centre. And I suppose in a way, that underlines the point we are trying to make, that we want to see a vibrant city centre. I actually saw on social media, because somebody shared a photograph of the city centre light switch on in the city square from, I think it was six years ago. It was absolutely utterly heaving, absolutely utterly heaving. And I will not quote some of the comments from the public, but I think we can get the measure of the public's view of the loss of the civic tree in the city square and the traditional light switch on by these comments. Now, these are anecdotal, I fully accept. But the point I have to say is that we should at least be looking into the viability of the points made in councillor Coleman's amendment. We're not saying this is some form of final decision. We're not saying this is some form of final decision. We just think in terms of reasonableness, we should at least be looking into the viability of the two points that have been made in the amendment and I'll leave it at that, Guevina. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bailey McPherson. Going to move to the formal stage at this point. What I would say is that members all are aware that they have the opportunity to feed back to officers any suggestions that they have at any time regarding events, procedure, sponsorship etc. And that is open to every elected member. And what I would say is that I have great sympathy with the amendment and everything that's been put forward. As I say, the issue is the financial environment that we're operating in. Now, we've already talked about, you know, potential sponsors in the future and I can confirm, as I said before, that I've already had conversations with officers about how the event might look in the city square in future years, rather, both in terms of, you know, a potential switch on and crowd control. Obviously, there are complicated issues there that maybe weren't there six years ago. But nevertheless, those conversations have started regarding next year's event. That being said, and as I say, while I've got the greatest sympathy for the idea behind the amendment, I'll be moving the motion as is for various reasons, but largely for the facts that have been outlined in terms of the council's commitment to this event, the difficulties of hosting the fireworks displays and the, as I say, the fact that we're already considering some of this in the round in terms of next year's event. So I'll be moving the motion as is. Do I have a second or?
I'll formally stick.
Councillor Alexander or councillor Roberts, was it? I'm not sure. Or councillor Tolland, was it?
Yeah, yeah, but either of us, fine.
Okay, appreciate that. Arlene, can we move to vote, please?
Thanks, Guevina. The motion by the convenor, seconded by councillor Tolland, is approval of the recommendations in the report. The amendment by councillor Coleman, seconded by councillor Duncan, is as circulated. Guevina?
Motion.
Councillor Alexander?
Motion.
Councillor Anderson?
Motion.
Deputy Lord Provost?
Motion.
Bailey Dawson?
The motion.
Councillor El Nakla?
Motion.
Councillor Flynn?
The motion.
Councillor Hunter?
Motion.
Councillor Lynn?
Motion.
Bailey Roberts?
Motion.
Bailey Sors?
Motion.
Councillor Short?
The motion, please.
Councillor Smith?
Motion.
Councillor Tolland?
Motion.
Bailey Keenan?
Amendment.
Councillor Crookshank?
Amendment.
Councillor Finnegan?
Amendment.
Councillor McEwan?
Amendment.
Councillor McCarvin?
Amendment.
Councillor Malone?
The amendment.
Councillor Scullen?
The amendment.
Bailey Wright?
Amendment.
Bailey McPherson?
The amendment.
Councillor Coleman?
The amendment.
Councillor Crichton?
The amendment.
Councillor Duncan?
Amendment.
Bailey Scott?
Amendment.
So that's 14 for the motion and 13 for the amendment, so the motion is carried.
Thank you, Arlene. Can we have the amendment moved off the screen, please, and move to the next item, please?
Thanks. That takes us on to item three, fleet asset management plan. You have this for approval.
Thank you. This item seeks approval of the fleet asset management plan for 2023 to 2028, as you just said. The asset management plan is an asset category plan of the overarching corporate asset management plan approved by the Policy and Resources Committee on the 26th of June 2023. The plan provides inventory details of the council fleet and sets out the council's strategy for the management, operation and decarbonisation of fleet assets. Do you have any questions on this, please? Bailey McPherson, is there any question?
Yes, it is. Thanks, Guevina. I have a question regarding fleet rationalisation. On page 69 of the report, it indicates some 17 items of plant have been removed from neighbourhood services. Whilst removing the vehicle footprint across the city is positive, we don't, I am sure, wish to see removing key items of plant that are required to maintain services such as environment management. So I'm just wondering if officers can give an indication of the breakdown of these 17 items of plant, what they were used for and if their removal has any impact on service delivery.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. I don't know, Mr. McNorton, whether you want to take this or whether you want to take it off table or whether Mr. Boyle has the answer?
Yeah, thank you, Guevina. I can answer this question. The items had to do with the landscaping operations and there were duplicates of items. So it was groups where we had multiples of the same vehicles and through efficiency reviews and resourcing programming changes within the service. They've reduced down the number of assets to smaller groups of assets. So no change to service output, just the manner of delivery.
Thanks, Mr. McNorton. Thanks for that. The bottom line is, if there's no impact on service delivery, I don't have a problem. And from what Mr. McNorton's given us and by way of assurance, there is no impact on service delivery. So I'm grateful for Mr. McNorton's response. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey McPherson. Bailey Keenan, please.
I note the number of vehicles that we've got that would be okay for the low emission zone. But I wonder what reassurance officers can give us that they'll be absolutely doing everything they can to minimise the entry of any other vehicle that may not be complying in the city centre. Given that Glasgow's seems to be never out the press for getting, you know, endless pelters for their vehicles being non-compliant.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. Hopefully, they'll take in the brunt of that, having gone first. And we can learn from that, but also there'll be greater knowledge within the general public. But Mr. McNorton, can you answer this as well?
Yeah, thank you, Guevina. We do have a Transport Scotland-funded local communications plan and strategy in place, which will be commencing on the run-up to the implementation date of enforcement, the 30th of May. That does involve some media work and also some physical signage work throughout the city centre as well. And again, this is to complement the National Comms Plan, which will be put in place by Transport Scotland in the lead up to the enforcement date coming live.
So, Guevina, I'm not sure Mr. McNorton's fully understood my question. It's about the council's own vehicles and those that are not compliant, trying to minimise them ever entering the low emission zone.
Thanks for that, Bailey Keenan and Mr. McNorton.
Yep, thanks very much. We've put on stickers onto the dashboards of all non-compliant vehicles we have in the fleet to physically remind drivers that they are in a non-compliant vehicle. Again, that'd be supplemented with toolbox talks to all workforce about the low emission zones regulations, the zone boundary and the vehicles. And again, as we phase out the last of our non-compliant vehicles, we'll be doing that through program management and resource deployment management.
Thank you, Mr. McNorton. Does that fully answer your question, Bailey Keenan?
Well, I would have hoped for a bit more in depth in the use of the tracker system that we've got to make sure that, you know, there wasn't that ability for error. And if someone was on a route that regularly travels into town, that we would have made sure it was not there. But, you know, I'll accept where we are.
Thanks, Bailey Keenan. My understanding of that would be retrospective, but I'd imagine that individuals should be fully aware. You know, as I say, with a big sticker, whether they shouldn't go into town or not. But thank you for that addition. I don't see any further questions, so can this report be agreed? I'll take that as agreement then. Can we move on, please, Arlene?
That takes us on to item four, roads asset management plan. This is for approval.
So this item seeks approval of the road asset management plan for 2023-2028. Similarly, this is an asset category plan of the overarching corporate asset management plan approved by the Policy and Resources Committee on 26th of June 2023. The plan sets out the strategy for the management and maintenance of the council's road, bridges, streetlights, traffic signals and bus shelter assets. Can see councillor Duncan's got a question first. So councillor Duncan?
Yep, thanks, Guevina. You actually mentioned what's got to do with my question. It's the bus shelter assets as detailed on page eight to seven. There's something like 348 bus shelters in Dundee. And I think we're all aware that over, you know, recent months was repeated vandalism with lots of the panes of the glass getting smashed into smithereens, sometimes within hours of being replaced. And my concern, I suppose, as we move into the bad weather, well, I suppose we've already moved into the bad weather. I think for a number of reasons, it's good to get people out and about, moving around. It's good for them, it's good for the economy. And I suppose what I'm saying is that as the weather worsens and the nights lengthen, the idea of hanging around at a bus stop with no shelter is less than appealing. So I'm aware that, you know, obviously, unfortunately, logi glazing recently went into administrations, so that cannot have helped. But I'm really therefore asking what steps have been taken to re-tender and find an alternative contractor? Because as I say, you know, the weather's only going to worsen, as we all know.
Thank you, councillor Duncan. I think that's a very fair question. Ask Mr. McNorton to come in and answer that.
Yeah, thank you, Guevina, and thank you for the question, councillor Duncan. The, we are going through an exercise for procurement at the moment, assessing both in-sourcing and outsourcing options for the replacement of the previous provider. We're planning to have that finalized shortly. The, in terms of the service response standard, we have got that specified within the page eighty, ninety, page ninety of the plan. Target date of 30 working days to replace smashed glazing. And again, with an immediate clear-up within 24 hours. Again, we'll be measuring our performance against that service standard.
Can I just come, can I just come back in brief way? Because these response times would be admirable if they were actually kept to. I mean, I'm familiar with my own ward, obviously, more than other wards in Dundee. And I can assure you that there's been several panes of glass missing for frankly months. It's certainly well, well over 30 days.
Yeah, thank you for that. Certainly, we have had an influx of vandalism spates throughout the city over the course of this year. And again, that's something that we're taking cognisance of from a resourcing point of view and looking to ramp up. So we've got a greater ability to respond within a more appropriate timescales in the future.
Okay, okay, thanks. That's reassuring to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Duncan. Bailey Scott, please.
Thanks, Guevina. I wanted to ask you about the funding of carriageway resurfacing. And I can see that currently we try to maintain the road network in its current state, which is at 27.7% requiring resurfacing work. That to maintain it like that, where there's a funding shortage of one and a half million pounds in the capital fund. And without that additional funding, the level of disrepair of the road is going to rise to 35% requiring attention. And I think you'll find that a lot of residents will agree that some of our roads aren't the best and are in very much in need of repair. And I know RMP are very good and they react effectively to any issues that are brought to their attention and do deal with things very quickly and effectively. But my concern is that it's going to be an ever-reducing condition of the roads without that additional investment. And my question to you, Guevina, is whether the administration will be adjusting the capital plan to ensure that there is sufficient resource within the budget to allow the roads' condition not to worsen anymore.
Oh, Bailey Scott, thank you. Thank you for the question, Bailey Scott. And obviously, the conditions of the road, as you say, is something that's of concern to everyone, to every road user. I think what I would say is that everyone is aware of the state of the, all local authority finances across the board and where we have the capital plan. So of course, you know, we'll be looking to invest as much as we can to stay within the family group in terms of our roads maintenance level and in terms of our spending. But that'll be dictated by resources going forward and depending on how things end up in terms of the inflation environment and where we're sitting with the capital plan at the time.
I would just say that, Guevina, that every year when I put forward a budget proposal, my amendment always includes additional money for improving the condition of our roads and pavements. And me as a single councillor in opposition, I'm able to find that additional funding for that. So I wouldn't have thought it'd be a biggie for the administration group to find the additional capital funding that would be required to allow that shortfall to be met.
Well, obviously, Bailey Scott, we'll look forward to what you put forward this year. I would say, but we just repeat that we're in an extremely difficult financial environment in terms of the capital plan and in terms of, you know, unheralded inflation. But we'll just have to see where we are when we come to the budget process. Is there any other questions on this item? If not, can this be agreed? Seeing for other questions, so I'll take that as agreed. Arlene?
Item five, procurement of a multi-supplier framework agreement for the provision of mechanical services. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this item seeks approval for the renewal of the existing framework for mechanical services. The structure of this framework provide the maximum opportunity for the local supply chain to participate in the framework and in turn enhance the community wealth of the city through the word of contracts. Sorry, my voice is starting to go over you. We've got a lot to go. Questions? I can see councillor Finn first, please.
Yeah, thanks, Guevina. Can I go to 4.6 with regards to the encouraging of community wealth building within the report? Can we get officers, excuse me? Can we get officers to tell us what's been done to encourage and support local businesses to be included within the framework?
I don't know who wants to pick that up, Mr. Presswood or Mr. Martin?
I think Neil's probably closer to this one, Guevina.
Yeah, Guevina, happy to kick this one off. Thanks for the question, councillor Flynn. So in terms of what we're doing, obviously, there's a lot of specialisms within mechanical and electrical. And what we've looked to do here is try and split that up into the various lots. So for example, there may be plumbers within Dundee or what have you that may well not want to go forward for a bigger proportion of the works. But with where they've got the strength in terms of labour and skills, they can obviously put a bid in for just specific aspects of it. So it's really to try and maximise the flexibility for all local supply chain to have that opportunity. In terms of that, I know from working with procurement colleagues that the supply chain days and what have you encourage them to come forward. And if they're looking for support in terms of when these frameworks are going out for bidding, that the procurement team are able to give them that support in terms of submitting their bids for consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Martin. Are those assurances helpful, councillor Flynn?
I think I got the gist of that. I think when you said, can you clarify, Neil, to what encouragement and support that was actually given? I didn't quite understand what you're saying. There was events. Can you maybe clarify on what the events were?
Well, the whole, for example, meet the buyer day in terms of making contact for opportunities for business and what have you. And during those events, procurement colleagues are there in terms of offering support and outlining some of the processes that take place in terms of the paperwork. And it really depends on the individual company in terms of what support they'd be looking at or what questions they've got about the process. Possibly, Paul, you maybe want to come in and?
Yeah, I was waiting for you to finish, Mr. Martin. Paul, I can see you get your hand up. Do you want to come in on this?
Yes, thank you, Guevina. Yeah, I think Neil's covered much of what I was going to say. And notwithstanding, as I haven't been involved in the specific arrangements in terms of the detail of this tender, but I'm certainly happy to take that offline, councillor Flynn, and come back with any specific detail in terms of this particular framework in terms of what's been done to encourage local businesses to participate.
Thanks very much for that, Paul. Thank you. Thanks, Neil.
Thank you for that. And I think it's always appreciated to know that there are opportunities there and encouragement available for local businesses to come forward in any way, shape or form to get the support in order to get on these frameworks. Bailey McPherson, please.
Thanks, Guevina. I'll not repeat my, you know, longstanding concern about the way these framework decisions are go-to-committee, are reported and the public transparency. I think my comments on that are well-known. However, with regard to the issue of transparency, I note that in relation to one of the other items, item seven, it gives a very specific circumstance in which a committee would approve a tender. Now, in relation to item five, it talks about that matters will be brought back to members for consideration in due course where it is not within the scheme of delegation. I just want to be clear, is that for? I just want to be clear, is that for information or is that for a decision if it is not covered by the scheme of delegation?
Mr Martin? Or again, oh, sorry, Mr Thompson.
Thank you convenor and ha- thank you Bailey McPherson for the question. I would confirm, uh, that would be coming back to members, um, for approval. Uh, where that approval hasn't been delegated to officers within the current standing.
That is reassuring because, uh, as I say, it's all about transparency. At the end of the day, I have no issue about, uh, awards that fall within the scheme of delegation. That's very longstanding. But I think we do have to ensure that we are as transparent as possible. So I'm grateful to Mr Thompson for his response.
Thank you for your comments Bailey McPherson. Uh, I'm sure we can all agree on that. Um, I don't see any other questions on this item. So can this be agreed as well? Okay, I'll take that as agreement. Next item, please.
Item six, inspection and testing of emergency lighting systems area one, three-year contract with option to extend. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So again, this item seeks approval for the commencement of a sourcing strategy to provide the contract for inspection and testing of emergency lighting systems to properties within the city. Do you have any questions on this item? No? Can this be agreed then, please? Okay, I'll take that as agreement. Move on then, please.
Takes us on to item seven, inspection and testing of swimming pool plant and equipment, three-year contract with the option to extend. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this item seeks approval for the commencement of a sourcing strategy to provide the contract for inspection and testing of the swimming pool plant and associate equipment within the city. Um, apologies if you can hear the screaming in the background here. Uh, Bailey McPherson, please.
Uh, thanks convenor. This is going to cost four hundred and ten thousand pounds and is absolutely necessary. I, I'm wondering if officers, um, particularly the chief executive can ask about financial support in relation to, uh, swimming pool and their upkeep. Um, as I understand that the Westminster Government's Swimming Pool Support Fund provided a total of sixty million pounds to local authorities in England. As a support package for swimming provision. Scotland received its share, as did Wales and Northern Ireland, um, through the Barnet Consequentials. But there are concerns that the money that has been subsumed in, that the money has been subsumed into the Scottish Government's financial black hole and not distributed to local councils. Um, SNP ministers abducted and dived on this, but have not given a straight answer to the question. And therefore I was wondering if the chief executive can advise if there has been any information received by Dundee City Council. About the distribution of Dundee's share of the swimming support consequentials arriving, arising out of the swimming pool support fund being given to the council.
Thank you Bailey McPherson. Uh, Mr Cogan?
Thanks convenor. Thanks Bailey McPherson. I don't have any information to hand to respond to the question which I've asked. However, if you leave that with me, I'll speak to officers and seek necessary assurance and provide a written response to all elected members of the committee.
That would be very helpful, Mr Cogan. I'd also be grateful if we've received nothing. If perhaps, uh, you as chief executive could ask, just asking for an update from Scottish government on that. But I'm grateful for your reply. Thank you.
Thank you Bailey McPherson. Um, with that, don't see any other questions. So can this report be agreed? Okay, I'll take that as agreement. Next item then, please.
Item eight, inspection and testing of heating and ventilation control systems, three-year contract with option to extend. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this item seeks approval for the commencement of a sourcing strategy to provide the contract for inspection. Inspection and testing the heating and ventilation controls for properties within the city. Do you have any questions on this item? Give it a little bit of time. No, I don't see any raised hands or questions. So can this item be agreed also? I'll take that as agreement. Next item, please Arlene.
Item nine, Kairt Hall Dundee fire alarm and emergency lighting upgrade. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this item seeks approval for the commencement of a sourcing strategy to provide the contract for the upgrade and extension of the fire alarm and emergency lighting system. And installation of a new voice evacuation system within Kairt Hall. Do you have any questions on this item? No? Can this one be agreed as well then, please? Okay, agreed. Next item, please Arlene.
Item ten, Clippington Road depot rationalisation, purchase of modular office accommodation. You're asked to agree the recommendations.
So this item seeks approval for the commencement of a sourcing strategy to provide the contract for the purchase of modular accommodation at Clappington Road. As the next phase of the depot rationalisation. The accommodation was pride messing, welfare and canteen facilities. Um, Bailey Keenan?
Yeah, just, uh, sorry, just, just wondering whether officers could provide a briefing for elected members. It's getting to the stage where I'm not sure of all what's involved or still to be involved in this depot rationalisation. And I'm pretty sure that some of the new councillors that came on in May last year. Don't know anything about it whatsoever because we ain't heard anything in such a long time. You know, I've heard that in previous bits we were going to build, uh, perhaps bits at March Banks that were all part of this. So can, can we get it refreshed? Uh, so as that we're aware of what it is and, and is it really necessary, this level of spend? Given that there is a, a will rationalise, uh, the amount of buildings that council has. And, and you know, we've heard the endless times tonight about the financial situation of the council. So is it ultimately important that we spend this money?
Um, thanks Bailey Keenan. I mean, my understanding obviously this is to rationalise the estate, so there's less spending on the estate. But I'll bring, maybe ask, uh, Louise Bitcher if she wants to come in at this point.
Yep, thank you convenor and thank you for the question. I'm, I'm conscious Bailey Keenan that you've spoke there around the wider depot rationalisation by mentioning March Banks. Um, so I'm not sure if that's something that Robin and Neil, um, would want to come in on in terms of a wider, um, update for members around the depot rationalisation programme. Um, but happy to look at something specifically, um, in respect of construction services.
Thanks Louise. Um, is that helpful Bailey Keenan? We tried to bring in Mr Presswood and Mr Martin as well?
Be, uh, be useful for to have that comment. I mean, how much more of this rationalisation programme for March, uh, for, you know, is this, uh, is required within this depot? You know, what, what was the master plan and how close I would to have met it? Uh, because, you know, it's something that's been talked about forever. And if it's still getting mentioned in papers, then I'd like to kind whether we're close unfinished.
Uh, I'm not sure. Uh, Mr Presswood, did you have your hand raised there?
I did though, uh, I accidentally put the thumbs up instead of the hand raised.
I thought that.
Apologies, uh, chat. Um, yeah, there, there's a number of property rationalisation, uh, programmes ongoing. Uh, because I think I've said to members previously that we spend, uh, approaching ten percent of the council's budget on property. And obviously given the very significant financial challenges, uh, that the council faces, we do need to reduce the number of properties and, and support service delivery through fewer properties. Uh, we also need to exit from, uh, poorer quality properties and consolidate on the ones which are in better condition to try and, uh, place a downward, um, pressure on spend. And on staff resources, which as you're aware are very limited. Um, so we've had the first, sorry, we, we've had two programmes which have been fully, uh, implemented. Uh, and that covers properties such as, uh, Dudup Castle, Mitchell Street, um, et, et, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, the third one is looking at, uh, the, uh, the council's office portfolio. And I, I think members are aware that we are marketing properties such as Dundee House to, to bring in, uh, other public sector partners potentially. Um, and the fourth one will look at a, a broader basket of, uh, properties citywide, uh, essentially everything that remains. Um, within that strand, depot rationalisation commenced in, uh, the second phase and continues at this time. Um, as you say, the Clappington Road, uh, part of that has, uh, been, uh, somewhat delayed obviously because of COVID and other pressures. Uh, within various parts of the service, including construction services. The aspiration there is to, uh, ultimately exit from, uh, Construction House, uh, which is in poor condition, allow its demolition. Uh, and replace it with modern facilities. Uh, the proposal, uh, tonight is the office part of that. And, uh, the more substantive part is the, uh, the relocation of the stores into modern premises, which will be created based around the, uh, the MOT, uh, building. Uh, other aspects of depot rationalisation include, uh, the environmental, um, services depot at, um, at Baldovy. Uh, which requires modernisation and relocation. So we're currently exploring options there, uh, with, uh, Mrs Zuerle and Mr Boyle. Um, and we are reviewing March Banks. We anticipate that because of the, uh, the, the committed investment in each one of these three sites. It would be impossible to centralise, uh, and reduce because they need to be geographically located there. And the facilities, uh, could not relocate, there, there simply isn't enough room to close one site and to move to the others. We have considered that type of, uh, option. Uh, but at the moment, we believe continuing to operate from a number of different sites is, is the correct approach. Uh, March Banks does require future investment, uh, but at the moment we're focusing, uh, staff resource on, uh, the Baldovy Environmental Services Depot. And, uh, Clappington Road, um, and once those projects are complete, I think it's, it's logical that the team next turns its focus to March Banks. To consider how the quality of accommodation there could be improved. I hope that's helpful, but happy to supply any more, uh, information separately if that would assist Bailey Keenan.
Thank you, Mr Presswood. Bailey Keenan, is that something you would appreciate having a written report around, uh, all elected members?
Well, I'll, I'll certainly, uh, discuss, uh, initially with, uh, Mr Presswood. But certainly, you know, I think the other elected members, uh, should have a better understanding of what's going on, given that, you know, the, the Clappington Road, uh. Rationalisation was, has been in progress for a while. I thought the, the, the majority of the senior staff had moved, uh, from there into the centre of the town, uh, some years back. And, uh, you saw, I, I would like to sort of understand now where are these projects are and how much more of a spend would likely be called upon to make.
Thanks Bailey Keenan.
We must have pressed with the start with.
Thanks Bailey Keenan. Uh, can I bring in Mr Cogan as well, who might want to speak a bit about this as well?
Yeah, thanks convenor. Just picking up on Bailey Keenan's point, I think it would be helpful just to update all elected members around property rationalisation, including depots. So officers will take an action to provide a briefing so that all twenty-nine members are aware of works that's underway and future work that's planned convenor.
Thank you, Mr Cogan. I'm sure everyone will find that really helpful. Um, I see no further questions. So can I, uh, ten be agreed? Thank you. Move on then, please.
Item eleven, Lawn Tennis Association Parks Improvement Programme, and this is for approval.
So this item seeks approval to authorise the Lawn Tennis Association's, uh, approved contractor for the upgraded Dundee City Council's tennis courts. This project has been funded through a grant award from the Lawn Tennis Association's Park Improvement Programme, uh, as previously reported through the Neighbourhood Service Committee earlier this year. And I'll bring in, uh, Mr Boyle to speak to this. Mr Boyle?
Thanks convenor. Well, I think you've, you've basically set out what, what we're doing here. This was previously reported to the Neighbourhood Services Committee in June of this year. And this is us just taking it to the next logical step where we'll take advantage of the Lawn Tennis Association's welcome, uh, funding of a hundred and sixty-four thousand pounds. To make sure that all the tennis courts across the city are brought up to a very, very high standard. Thanks convenor.
Apologies, I've just been hit by an extremely bad cramp, which is why I've gone off screen. Um, but, uh, I think, as you say, it's fairly self-explanatory. So unless there's any further questions on that, I'll take that as read that we're going to proceed onwards. Is there any further questions? Nope, we'll move on then, please. Uh, next item, please, Arlene?
That takes us on to item twelve, environmental improvement works twenty-three, twenty-four. This is for approval.
Again, I, I think that's, this item is similarly self-explanatory. Uh, it seeks approval for the further environmental improvements as part of the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four programme. So there'll be a range of projects undertaken across the city, uh, which are designed to improve and enhance open spaces and make them safer, more attractive places for residents to enjoy. Uh, as I say, we've, we've got Mr Boyle here and I believe, uh, councillor Crichton is the first question. Councillor Crichton?
Uh, thank you convenor. Um, the provision of additional tree planting in Magdalen Green, um, is very welcome. Um, screening of the motor garage, um, from the green was raised by elected members and indeed the community council, um, along, for a long time. So, um, this is really welcome. But can I ask, um, if this will extend the full length eastwards from the current end of the trees? West of the back of barnets from the slope up to the riverside approach, um, at the east end of the green. Um, it'll need to cover the full length of this if it is to, uh, fully screen the green from the garage buildings.
Mr Boyle?
Thanks convenor. Thanks councillor Crichton. I can't give you a definitive answer to that, so I'll come back to you, uh, directly, uh, over the next couple of days if that's okay.
Yeah, that's more than okay. Yeah, thank you, Mr Boyle.
Uh, councillor Duncan, please?
Uh, yeah, thanks convenor. Just, uh, uh, brief, uh, comments. Uh, there's mention on page one hundred and twenty-nine of, uh, forthcoming improvement works at the Sunken Garden in Dawson Park. And, uh, I'm particularly pleased about, you know, the, uh, measures that are going to increase the amount of accessible seating and pathways. Uh, I've mentioned other sites, um, to officers as well. But I mean, certainly as far as the public goes, I think this year then we seem to be getting like more rain of the year as we go on. So the Sunken Garden has been resembling something of a, a swimming pool this year than recent years. So I think a lot of people will be very pleased about this, uh, you know, anything that can be done to alleviate this. Um, because obviously a lot of people, particularly with kids and push chairs and stuff, they've simply not been able to even skirt around the grass because it's, it's been so muddy. So this is really good news now. I, 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 my, my thanks for that.
Thank you councillor Duncan. I, I think that'd be much appreciated by all. And I'm sure that no one would disagree with your comments there. Uh, do we have any further questions on this item? No? Can, uh, this be agreed then? Thank you. We'll move on then, please, Arlene. Item thirteen?
Yeah, item thirteen, tenders received by head of design and property and head of sustainable transport and roads. This is for approval.
Well, this item is seeking approval to accept five tenders with a combined expenditure in the region of a million pounds for construction work and consultancy services across the city. These tenders comprise, uh. Inspection and testing of heat pumps at the DNA in the regional performance centre, inspection and testing and cleaning of kitchen canapes and associate duct work. Uh, works to repair defects, uh, in sections of Camden Park boundary walls, design work for the, uh, proposed pedestrian bridge over the railway at Magdalen Green. And urban traffic control bus priority software upgrade. Um, I'll put my teeth back in, uh, it's just another symptom of old age, I think. Uh, do I have any questions on this item? Is that, um, Bailey McPherson, are you on this item?
Yes, I am indeed. Uh, it's, uh, I do have a question. It's about the, um, tender in relation to the new Magdalen Green footbridge. Um, I'm really seeking a, a clear assurance in a sort of public setting from officers that before. Four hundred and forty-two thousand pounds of public money is committed, that they are absolutely confident. That any designed new bridge will actually be deliverable, given that Network Rail, um, has indicated. That through its central belt enhancement project, there is the potential for a land take of part of Magdalen Green, quite a small bit. But nonetheless, a land take for new passing loops. This is to, uh, speed up rail travel apparently. Um, the, I, I did raise this with officers and my concern is that although the response I had from the principal engineer indicated that. It was considered that there'd be little or no direct impact on the footbridge design. The crux of it was, quote, to the, and I'm reading one for word, quote, to the extent that Network Rail's proposals have been developed. And my understanding is that the Network Rail proposals are in a very early stage. What I don't want us to do is spend a lot of public money designing a new footbridge and then have to spend more money redesigning it. If at a later stage, Network Rail comes along and says, well, actually, we need to widen the, um, the, the, the land take at that particular point. Um, of the, uh, of the green. So I, I just want us to be clear here that we're absolutely confident. That there will be no impact from the Network Rail central belt enhancement project on the deliverability at this stage of the design that will come forward. If we attend this, uh, if we approve this tender tonight.
Thank you Bailey McPherson. Your concerns are totally understandable. So I'll ask Mr Martin to come in and give that reassurance that conversations are ongoing with, uh, with Network Rail regarding the design work. Mr Martin?
Thanks convenor. Thanks Bailey McPherson. As, as you've just outlined convenor, yeah, uh, conversations are going on. So as, uh, we develop our design Bailey McPherson, we will be, uh, in consultation with Network Rail. Um, and, uh, to safeguard, uh, your concerns as much as is reasonably possible. Um, and, and I would be expecting Network Rail to share their, uh, information as their design develops as well. So we can, uh, hopefully re, reach that harmony and we've not got any abortive work going forward.
I'm grateful for that. I think it's vitally important that we don't power ahead with a design only defined at Network Rail who. And, 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 uh, the reply I had is perfectly fair. It says to the extent that Network Rail's proposed. It says, "To the extent that Network Rail's proposals have been developed", I understand they're not greatly developed at this stage. And the concern obviously is that you press ahead and then find you have to alter them. So I'm grateful that officers are mindful of this. What we don't want is a, you know, a lot of work going into this only to find it then needs amendment, frankly, at a cost to the public purse. So I'm grateful to Mr. Martin for his response.
No, thank you, Bailey McPherson. I think it's an excellent point, well made. And Mr. Martin's given those assurances, the conversation's ongoing. So hopefully that gives you a bit of, as I say, reassurance. So can we move on, please, Arlene? Well, I see no further questions. I presume that, you know, that being said, that everyone's fine with this item? Thank you. And we can move on then, please, Arlene?
Thanks, convener. That takes us to the confidential part of the agenda. Do you wish to deal with this in the usual way?
Do we wish to deal with this in the usual manner? I'm seeing nods, so I presume yes. So that is agreed. So I presume that's item 14 and item 15 dealt with in the usual manner. So that would be the end of the Fair Work Economic growth and Enforcerate Committee.
Thank you, convener. The final committee this evening is the City Governance Committee.
Good evening, folks. We'll crack on with the business. Willie?
Yeah, thanks you very much. Firstly, are there any declarations of interest?
Any declarations? No, we'll take that as a no. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. We've been on declaration station to item two, Protecting People Committee annual reports. And I can advise the committee in relation to appendix three of the report at page 106. It mentions there's a decrease of 45 in the number of sexual sex offenders managed in the community of T-Side, and this is incorrect. And there was actually an increase of 45. This report is for noting.
Thanks very much, Willie. I should just say, following this item, I will call for a comfort break for members. But it was important to take this item first. We've had two of our independent chairs join us this evening, and I thank them very much for their patience. I know that they are certainly, Alan, I think you're on a bit of a time crunch. So I appreciate you staying for as long as you have. So Elaine Torrance and Alan Small join us tonight and I'm very grateful for, one, their work, their efforts, and also for joining us tonight. This report presents the annual published reports by the Dundee Protecting People's Committee for 2022-2023, which obviously covers a significant proportion of work in relation to alcohol and drugs, adult support and protection, child protection, multi-agency, public protection arrangements and violence against women. And I think you will all agree with me that there is a significant amount of work and significant efforts that go in to making sure that we protect every single citizen within the city. Members are asked to know the content of the report for the Protecting People Committees. And again, they are attached for your oversight and consideration. And in particular, I think it's really useful to note the progress that's been made in developing an effective partnership response to the needs of at-risk children and adults during 2223. And this is summarised in section 4.3. So with all of that said, I will go straight to questions and comments, I think. Bailey Keenan?
Convener, thanks for that. Convener, the report itself makes some very bleak reading and obviously a reflection on where some things are in the city. Obviously, poverty has no doubt got its role to play there. But if I can maybe ask a few questions and perhaps the sort of misappropriated lead officer could give a response. You know, it makes reference to Dundee as the fifth highest council for anxiety and depression. And that's out of 32 authorities, which, you know, doesn't make great reading. You know, the number of 43% of children living in the 25th, the 20th percent missed deprived areas, data zones, domestic abuse up to obviously 2,660, up 6.2%. I know the officers had a sort of senior officer discussion group on that, whether it be a year ago or a few years ago. But the sort of figures keep growing. So looking for what could be done to resolve that. And then, you know, there's another one where kids in care and that, you know, some of the reasons for them going into care is there's domestic abuse, parental mental health and drugs use. Obviously, all fairly high proportioned in the reasons why or in that part of the split up. So what more is that we could do to resolve some of these issues? What do we need to put in for a city council or a partnership point of view to make a real difference and start to see some of these things going in the other direction rather than increase?
Yeah, no, really good questions, Bailey Keenan. I think first and foremost, before I bring officers in, it's really important to emphasise the fact, as you have, that this is about a partnership approach. So the city council doesn't work in isolation on these issues. We all know that they are sadly alive in every single one of our communities. And that the only way that we're going to make significant inroads in that is by working in partnership between the various agencies and organisations and, of course, the third sector, who play a really important role in that work as well. And of course, I think it's really important that when we look at this type of report, when it pulls all of these really important stats together, that we don't underplay the significance of the issues that we're dealing with and contending with. But, you know, we certainly, as 29 elected members, I know, talk about this frequently in terms of the prevalence of those issues in our communities. But of course, there's an element here about making sure that we have adequate reporting measures. So we want to encourage, if that's the right description, people to come forward where there are these issues. You reference things like domestic abuse, and we know that sometimes these can be really challenging and the circumstances are very challenging. And of course, that doesn't always necessarily showcase or show the totality of the issues we're facing. So I think whatever figures we have within these reports, we know that actually it's probably much more significant than that. And that has to be the motivation for everything that we do. You had a couple of questions there, so I'll come to Diana, I think, in the first instance. You had a couple of questions in response to, I suppose, anxiety and care as well. So Diane, can I come to you perhaps in the first instance, if that's all right?
Yes, yes, thank you. I mean, I think, I think, thank you, Bailey Keenan, for your question because I do think this actually demonstrates one of the reasons why we need to consider how we bring our public protection forums together. Because actually, a number of those issues overlap currently a range of public protection committees. But we've recognised more and more that actually we're dealing quite often with the same people and we need to think about how we provide that very collective response. It probably sits out with the remit of this report in terms of some of the work that we do. But in terms of our mental health work, for example, things like COPE Point is about trying to start to engage with people at a much earlier position, which might not, and who might not have actually supported or come forward through our more statutory treatment types boards and services. So it's about how we can continue to kind of make those opportunities as available for people as early a point as we can. We know that in terms of things like our values against women, a lot of the work that we're doing in terms of gendered services, the opening of our new gendered hub means that women can go to places safely in order to have those conversations that they need to have and, again, raise concerns and allow us to start to work with them at a much earlier stage. So while we need to think about a partnership approach in relation to the support that's out there, because a lot of what we are dealing with are the consequences of much wider issues in relation to the kinds of support that people need, absolutely making our services as accessible and as safe for people as possible is one of the ways that we'll start to actually support and address and working collectively is the way that we need to go. I don't know if any of my other colleagues would want to come in at this stage?
Thanks, Diane. I was perhaps gonna, I don't want to put anybody on the spot. But Elaine, I don't know if you perhaps want to come in from your position as independent chair?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for your response and the question as well. Yeah, it is a challenge, the demographic, you know, the demographic challenges there are in the city. And I think that's reflected on in the stats, the statistics that you're talking about. So we have to all work together. And I think there has been a lot of really good work, particularly, for example, in child protection, adult protection, working much more closely together. But there's some interesting work in terms of child protection and violence against women, where we're trying to really work together. There's issues about raising the profile so people know how to get the help when they require. And on one level, the statistics look very, very challenging. But on the other hand, perhaps we are getting through to people and they are coming forward and therefore we're able to support them. So we have to keep an eye on the trend. And I know in the committees that we do look at the data very, very closely and we do try and analyse the trends and look at what else we can do to support the population here. But yeah, we've got adult support protection figures going up too, so more, more people. And again, you know, understanding the mental health issues that people have post-COVID, there's a whole load of things that we need to unpack in terms of understanding that. But I think the way forward is to work together, get the committees working together, making sure that we are in touch with the public and they understand and how they can seek support and how we can provide that support in a multi-agency way. And I think we are heading together in that direction. So hopefully, next year's report, we might see some changes in this and some of the work that we're doing come into fruition. So yes, so a big challenge. But I think the report really points us in the direction of all the work that's going on to try to help people in the city. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Kevin, do you want to come back?
I suppose it'd be, you could go on all night and ask questions around this report because it's so wide and varied and touches so many people within the city. But I wonder if health have another perspective on, you know, if we're all working together, how can we work more closely? And is there things that we could do by way of, I keep on suggesting, social prescribing, you know, that get together, but a light exercise, good for mental health? You know, are these options that are being discussed at health? And is it something that they see as a potential positive? What's the case that we'd be using some leisure and culture facilities and addressing some of the issues in the city as well?
Thanks, Kevin. We don't strictly have anybody from NHS T side on the call, but we do have Vicky and Diane who might offer a perspective from that sense. So happy.
Yes, happy to come in.
Diane?
Yeah, I'm happy to come in for that one. So Bailey Keenan, there are a range of activities and work that's going on that's linked to a number of groups. So I could talk, for example, in terms of the drug and alcohol services, where there are a number of groups that are being supported. In fact, something was just issued today, which gives a range of things like walking groups and other forms of community activity, which actually support people, everything from football to kind of gardening, to kind of work and support in the communities. And we're trying really hard to embed a lot of that work at a community level so that it is being picked up by local people and supported by local people as well. In relation to social prescribing, again, we have a service which works from our GP practices. We continue to review that under our primary care improvement work that we're focusing on. And we're actually looking quite recently, we are looking in the next couple of months to produce a primary care strategy for Dundee, which will come to the IGB in the future, which will try to set out some of that work that we need to do. So a lot going on at this particular point. Again, we maybe need to be a bit more connected across the piece to ensure that we're making the best of those resources. But absolutely recognise that, that approach and the benefits to it. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Vicky?
Yeah, I don't really have much further to add to Diane's summary there because I think it's pretty full. But I think the other thing that we are doing really in line with our strategic plan is concentrating on various long-term conditions as well. And again, that's through our primary care partners and colleagues to ensure that we are targeting those with either one long-term condition or, as is the case for quite a large number of our population now, people who are living with more than one condition in terms of comorbidity. So we've always understood the tremendous role, particularly of exercise, whether it doesn't matter how light that may be in terms of the management of conditions, but also helping support better mental health around lots of people who have challenges, either in terms of their long-term condition or, as was mentioned earlier, we do seem to have a legacy on the back of COVID in terms of people being able to cope with everyday demands. So those are the other things which we're concentrating our efforts on.
Thanks very much to all of you for those responses. Bailey McPherson?
Thanks, convener. Could I start off by joining you in thanking the independent chairs for the level of commitment that they give? They're frankly unsung heroes because there's a huge level of commitment goes in. And I just want them to know that I think across the council, we appreciate the work that they put in. My question's around the hard subject of suicide deaths and suicide prevention. On page 34, it indicates that in 2021 Dundee had the second highest rate of suicide deaths alongside Highland. And very sadly, in that year, 25 people died by suicide. Page 15 of the report indicates that the following year, suicide deaths in 2022 were 19.6 per 100,000 of the population. Now, they're two different years and I was just really wondering, is there a trend? I appreciate there may not be, but I was just really wondering, is there a trend? Obviously, there are a lot of positive steps being taken. And I think the Hope Point Community Wellbeing Centre being a very good example of doing something proactive in this area. But I was just really wondering if the information for different years on page 15 and page 34 indicates a trend? And are we seeing, hopefully, over time, a reduction in the number of suicide deaths in the city?
Thanks for the question, Bailey McPherson. Perhaps go to Diane in the first instance?
Thank you. I can start, just a bit of information to share. But then I'm going to ask Catherine to come in in terms of the data because I don't have that. We recognise that this is an area where I think we need to do a bit more work in terms of developing our own strategy. We actually have an event planned in January, which is a workshop in terms of bringing a large number of people together to start to talk about what else we think we need to do in terms of our strategic work around suicide prevention. So that will tie into the work such as Hope Point we've done already and some of the other actions we've taken in relation to mental health. But I'll ask Catherine to come in in terms of the data.
Yeah, that'd be great. Catherine?
Thank you. I will double check the data and circulate it to members tomorrow. The small increase between 2021 and 2022 was a slight change in trends. In previous years, there have been small decreases and similar to the across Scotland. But obviously, much more to do around about that area. But I will confirm the exact figures for in the last five years to colleagues tomorrow, so that you've got that.
Thanks, Catherine.
I'm grateful for that, Catherine, and also grateful for Diane's input. Appreciated.
Yep, thank you both very much for that. Councillor McQ?
Thank you, Chair. This is an excellent, if quite sobering, report. It has some very stark statistics. I like the way it's laid out. The graphics, you know, make it really clear. We can't miss this. We can see the extent of the challenges in our city that, of course, we're fully aware of. But so thank you to everyone who was involved in putting this report together. It's a very useful document for elected representative. I'm pleased to see on the information about the efforts that are being made to support staff wellbeing. You know, it must be very difficult at times and has been throughout COVID and post-COVID for staff to continue to provide the support and the help that they do, you know, to the people in need in our city. So I'm pleased to see that we are looking after, aware of our own staff's wellbeing. I have one question, and it relates to section 4.1.3 of the report, and it's the last bullet point, which says that it's about case reviews. And it says that a total of eight cases were considered for review during 2022-23. Six were not progressed. Now, I'm just wondering, is that how this works? You know, you might consider eight, but you would only usually do two. Or was there a reason for only two of these case reviews to be taken forward?
Thanks for the question, Dorothy. Catherine?
Thank you. And thanks very much, Councillor McQ, for your comments on the report. I'll pass that on. Okay, that goes to two of our graduates within the team who really led on this report and particularly the format and all that. And I'll be delighted to hear your feedback. In terms of significant case reviews or case review activity during 2022-23, we've been working still to a significant case review in process. So that's a two-stage process where we consider referrals of cases and what's called an initial case review and use that to determine whether they meet a set criteria for progression to a significant case review. So that's about some of the characteristics of what's happened, but significantly about public interest and looking at the case, but also the potential for multi-agency learning in the case. So not all cases meet that criteria, and that is why some progress and some do not as well. And that's reported regularly. And that's reported regularly through the committees and through the chief officers group. So they, they have the decision-making authority in terms of recommendations that are made by our significant case review panels. Diane, as the Chief Social Work Officer, also has a significant role in that process. But I'm happy to describe that process a little bit more to anybody who's interested off table and give you a bit more information about that.
Thank you, Catherine. That's helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. Can I just please remind everybody to keep themselves on mute unless they're asking a question? Sorry for the interruption, Catherine. Got a couple more questions, I think. So I'll come to Kinsler Anderson next.
Thank you. This is a question, I think I've discussed this partly with Catherine previously. And we've got the stats in the report about life expectancy. And we know that life expectancy in, in Scotland is decreasing. But the most staggering stats that were coming out was the difference between a healthy life expectancy and an unhealthy life expectancy. And we now know that depending on whether or not you live in the richest or the poorest areas, there's now a twenty-four-year gap about how long you can expect to lead a healthy life. And I think for people in the poorest areas, it's a man, it's now forty-four years old before you can expect to begin to have significant illness. And so I just wondered if you were thinking of focusing in on those particular stats around unhealthy life expectancy in future reports? Because it could also help us target actions.
Thanks for the question, Heather. I think there's probably a couple of elements to that. And I'll bring perhaps Catherine in any moment, not to put you on the spot, Catherine. I suppose one other thought around this, and you raised this eloquently at the recent Dundee Fairness Leadership Panel Conversation, is that actually that issue probably resonates and pops up in a number of different places when we consider issues of poverty, deprivation, health, lifestyle and all of that. So again, thinking about that lens of poverty as a means for questioning, interrogating and understanding those issues of healthy lives. Because that stat wasn't actually one that I was aware of. So it really got me thinking as well. I can see Vicky's put her hand up. So perhaps go to Vicky in the first instance. Vicky?
Yeah, I'm just wanting to draw on a conversation we had at the recent IGB, which was held last week when we also received the Director of Public Health's annual report. And, and certainly we're making the connections through the availability of that report, but also the Director of Public Health from NHS T side sitting on the IGB. So she's had access to all of our strategic plans, to all of the reports from the Protecting People agenda. So I think there's great scope now to integrate the work that Emma represents from NHS T side into future reports, but also the work of each of the committees.
Thanks very much, Vicky. Yeah, I'll come to Kinsler Lynn next.
Keep this, I'll keep this brief.
Oh, you've put yourself back on mute, Ken.
Yep, I'll keep it brief. I just want to go back to the really sad topic of suicide. And Kinsler, sorry, Bailey McPherson mentioned Hope Point, which, one of the, one of the great champions of Hope Point was, was Phil Welsh, who lost a close family member who, who took his life. And sadly, himself died a few weeks ago. But I'm so glad that he loved to see Hope Point open. So yeah, that's, that's, I'm hoping that that's going to be a real help to people who are considering taking their own lives. It's really important that we get the message out about Hope Point. And we've done well with social media, all the third sector organisations that are aware of at the police, the ambulance service, Castview. I'm just wondering if anyone can confirm what we've done about signage? Because I, I, I was told that signage is going to be going up in the city centre, directing people to Hope Point. And more importantly, a particular suicide hotspot, we're going to have signage up there to, to let people know there was somewhere they could go for immediate assistance if they were in distress. I'm just wondering where we are with that signage? Is that complete?
Thanks, Ken. And you're absolutely right to mention Phil, who's obviously a great loss, not just because of the efforts that he led, but right up until his untimely death, he was fundraising for Hope Point and raising hundreds and, if not thousands of pounds to continue to support that work, which is worthy of recognition certainly. On your specific question around signage, or perhaps go to Diane?
Yeah. Kinsler, I'm, I'm happy to take that one off table. I don't know the answer to it just now, but I can go and check and come back to you.
Thank you. We need to get that done. Cheers.
Thank you very much. I can't see any further questions on this report. I think we're all in agreement in terms of the realities which are laid out to bear within the report, but also commending all of the work, not least by the independent chairs who join us this evening and all of the services that often go above and beyond to protect people in the city. So again, with that note of thanks, can I take this item as agreed? Thank you very much. Elaine and Alan, you are free to leave at this point. Thank you for your stamina and staying with us. Colleagues, as I said at the start of the item, I was going to suggest that we have a ten-minute comfort break so folk can top up cups and go to the toilet as required. So with your agreement, can we reconvene at twenty-five two, so seven thirty-five? Is that agreed? Okay, thank you very much. Hey, colleagues, that is twenty-five two. Thank you for your patience. First of all, I think most importantly, can I check that Willie Waddell is back?
I am indeed. Thanks, Convenor.
Excellent. Willie, right, we shall kick on with the agenda, please.
Okay, thank you. Take you on to item three, Dundee City Council Accounts and Audit, the raft of reports there before you.
As alluded to earlier, a fairly substantial piece of work in terms of the paperwork required to sign off the accounts. So I'm sure you've all had a chance to delve into these. Any questions or comments on that? Nope. Can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Okay, Willie?
Yeah, thank you. Take you on to item four, capital expansion monitoring. This is for noting.
Again, I'll go straight to questions. Kinsler McQ?
Sorry, John, I think my question was on the, the external auditor's report.
Oh, apologies, Dorothy. I was too quick. No, 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 please, no, 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 it was me perhaps being too quick. So please go ahead and ask your question. I'm happy to provide.
Okay, thank you. On, in the key messages, one of the key messages in the auditor's report is at number six, future financial plans are challenging and the council's long-term financial strategy needs to be updated. Could, could someone please maybe give us a, an up-to-date, or an update on, on what, what plans are in place to update the long-term financial strategy?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think it's continuously being updated, it's fair to say, in light of emerging challenges. And of course, we did recently take a report just on that financial outlook. And there's the regular report on medium-term financial planning. But I'll go to Robert to ask, answer the substantive point. Robert?
Thank you, Convenor. So the point that was drawn out through the Best Value Report and, and through this report here is looking longer term than the medium-term strategy that we put to committee last year. And particularly thinking about how matters such as demography and the objectives set out in the city plan and the council plan are reflected in the long-term financial strategy. So that's work that is ongoing at the moment. And we would intend to bring an update back alongside the budget next year.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, Dorothy?
Yes.
Okay, we agreed that report, so we'll just move on to the next item. Sorry, Willie?
Yeah, thanks. You had before you, item four, capital expansion monitoring, which was for noting.
Yeah, as I said, I'll go straight to any questions that people have, just the regular update report. Any questions on this? Be a little bit more patient this time, just in case. Nope. Okay, can this be agreed? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Item five, level of monitoring, this is also for noting.
Yep. Again, welcome. Any questions, comments on this? Fraser?
Thanks, Convenor. My question's about the information about leisure and culture Dundee on page three hundred and eighty-nine in relation to the financial support that has been extended to the thirty-first of March, twenty twenty-four, which was met from the Covid earmarked reserves. And I think we all felt that that was a very sensible thing to do. It's been very challenging for leisure and culture Dundee. Huge part of their income obviously is in relation to the Olympia. And obviously that, that income generation has not been possible for some considerable time. I'm very anxious indeed that we see the reopening of Olympia now ASAP and, and that we get some messaging to the public on when the reopening will happen. My question is really more to the Chief Executive, however, or indeed Mr Emmett. And that's really in relation to if they are of the view in their discussions with leisure and culture Dundee, if further additional financial support will be required by leisure and culture Dundee into the twenty-four, twenty-five financial year? Because I'm very conscious that even if Olympia reopen tomorrow, it will take a little bit of time to get the finances of leisure and culture Dundee on, back onto a completely even keel. And I'd be grateful if, you know, I'm sure there have been ongoing discussions between Chief Officers of the Council and the senior management and Board of Leisure and Culture Dundee. And I'd just be grateful if either Mr Emmett or Mr Colgan would be able to comment on that.
Thanks for the question, Fraser. I'll go to Robert in the first instance. Robert?
Thank you, Convenor. So, and thank you, Bailey McPherson. So first of all, discussions are ongoing about it. The council's strategy, financial strategy, we agreed, was, sets out effectively that we expect that services will manage within their resources. So we'll have the same proportionate growth as through the council's budget. So NACD are working in the presumption that they'll have a flat cash settlement too for the next financial year. That is a, a challenging proposition for them and they are working on that at the moment. So in due course, proposals, any proposals that affect services that the council has to make on a decision will have to come back before the council is part of its, its budget for next year. There is clearly uncertainty about what, what income recovery will take place on the back of Covid. And there's discussions ongoing, again, with colleagues about how, particularly with the reopening of Olympia, apologies, how the reopening will have an effect on that. And that is something we'll obviously report back to members in due course once, once that, once that happens, Convenor.
Okay, I'm grateful. Yeah, I'm grateful for that response. Nothing to add. Thanks, Mr Emmett.
Thanks very much. And I see no further questions on this. So can I take this item as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, Willie?
Okay, take you on to item six, Service Plan for Corporate Services, which is for approval.
Obviously, there's a lot within this in terms of the overall service and what it's delivering for the council. And this report sets out the key priorities and the improvements that we've seen across a whole host of services as well. I think in many respects, sometimes these areas of service are the ones that aren't always necessarily in the public gaze when we think about digital IT, people, risk register, workforce planning and all of that. So I'll just come to questions. Michael?
Thank you, Convenor. My question is just regarding to the age profile within corporate services as amplified on page four oh seven. It's very skewed towards staff who are over the age of fifty. And obviously, there's nothing wrong with that. But obviously, in the next ten to fifteen years, we need to be looking into the future and how we employ younger staff and getting that transition right before. There's a lot of staff, the exed staff that leave and there's a gap and there's a volume. So I'm just wondering what is being done in the kind of medium and long term to get younger staff so we can move on and get them into leadership positions?
Thanks for the question, Michael. I'll bring in officers in just a moment. I think be remiss of me as an older person's chap, not to say exactly what you've said, which is there's real value in quite a wide kind of demographic in terms of our workforce. And I think sometimes where we see the challenges is where we've got really experienced staff who have been in the area of service for a long period of time and then taken retirement. We've not had the opportunity to backfill. So you're right, we need to think about succession planning and that transfer of knowledge as well as just simply the, the age demographic as well. So can I perhaps bring Robert in in the first instance?
Thank you, Convenor. Thank you, councillor. So that this forms part of our workforce planning, it is an important aspect, thinking about how the workforce will change over, over the period ahead. So there are a number of measures in place across the, across the workforce, looking at trainee jobs, for example, in auditors. So we bring people through the organisation, the work that people's services are doing around modern apprentices, not just actually in corporate service, but is, but across the council. And I'm also mindful that the organisation continues to adapt and evolve. And no doubt, the shape of the organisation and the number of employees we have will change over future years as the organisation evolves in the face of the financial challenges. So, but the short answer, I suppose, Convenors, is that's part of our workforce planning. And we can provide updates on that as we come back through future iterations of the service plan.
Okay, thanks. Michael, you happy with that?
Yeah, I would just want to put on record that a close family member of mine is in the council over fifty. So there's certainly nothing wrong with council officers or any of the sort being over the age of fifty. I think I'll get in trouble for that. But no, the comment was just simply in regards to, yeah, we need kind of older people to pass on their knowledge. And if they don't, then there's a massive gap and there's a void and that's where issues arise. So we will look forward to Mr updating us.
Thanks very much. Hopefully, your question hasn't created any schisms within the Crichton household.
I think it will do, yeah.
Thanks very much. Well, let's make sure he doesn't see it. Thanks for the question. Right, we will go to Dorothy next. Dorothy?
Thank you. I have quite a similar question, certainly on the same sort of topic. But, you know, shout out to all the older employees in the council and all that experience and wisdom that they, they bring to council services. Good for them. My question relates to succession planning. It's highlighted on page four hundred and seven as well, where it says succession planning is required to identify new skills for the future, transfer existing skills and knowledge. So I think that's really important. I looked at the action plan but didn't actually see anything addressing that in the action plan. And I'm wondering whether Mr Emmett could advise if this also would be in the workforce plan?
Robert?
So, Convenor, for me, yes, thank you, Kinsler McQ, yes. So this will form part of our workforce planning, thinking about how people are moving on and relates very much to the aging part of the workforce and how we make sure that we don't lose key skills. Because you're right, there's people with a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge in the organisation. And it's really important that we're prepared for those moving on. So that is part of the workforce, workforce planning piece.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dorothy. And Kevin?
And, Convenor, it looks like lost days in two thousand nineteen, twenty was thirteen point two. I take it that'll be per local government staff, so per employee? And yet it's going to be two thousand twenty-six before we're back down to thirteen lost days. I mean, what's the trend and why we're seeing, why we're seeing such an increase to sixteen point two-seven? Given that a number of people will be hybrid working, working for home or whatever. So why are we seeing such a big trend? And well, that's not it. Similar question is, what's the, what's the plan in relation to hybrid working? And when are we likely to see that? And when are we, as councillors, going to be back meeting in the chambers?
Yep, I'll bring in Robert and Gillian is on the call. And Greg may well want to offer an insight to, actually, I'll maybe bring in Greg first to answer the last question in particular. But Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor, and thanks Bailey Keenan for the question. So in relation to hybrid working, I've covered this in previous meetings where the council has an agreed hybrid working approach, which worked with the trade unions, which was about identifying work styles for office-based staff. And we continually keep that under review. And it's something that the council leadership team will be looking again at to make sure that the service that we need to provide for the public is being done whilst trying to accommodate people's preferences to maintain hybrid. In relation to going back into the chamber, councillors will be aware that you approved the tender for that kit. That kit is currently being installed, I think, either this week or next week. And we will be engaging with different groups to discuss what that will look like and setting up mock committee meetings so that we can really make sure that we've tested the equipment and elected members are comfortable being back in the chamber and also being back having the option of hybrid meetings. So that's all I'd like to cover, Convenor. But as you say, Mr Emmett may want to pick up on the point of absence and add something else with regard to the move to hybrid within the committee meetings.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. Robert?
Thank you, Convenor. So nothing to add on the, on the meet, on the, on the hybrid meetings, Convenor? We'll be looking to get those up and running next year once we're confident that the system will work robustly for, for council meetings. But on sickness absence, we have seen an increase in sickness absence across the organisation. There's a number of measures. And if you wish, I can bring Gillian in, who can tell you about some of the work we're doing with trade unions to try and, try and manage that. I think it's in all of our aspirations to reduce that as quickly as we can. But, but we have seen since Covid a gradual rise. And I think realistically, it's going to take a while to bring that back down again. We're not seeing hybrid working as a, as a factor that's influenced that. But particularly what we have seen is an increase across frontline services. So the service with the highest area, not surprisingly, is around health and not surprisingly, is around health and social care. So I can provide more details than that if members wish. And if you wish, Gillian could contribute to the work, tell you about the work that we're doing with the unions.
Yep, thanks. I'll happily bring Gillian in. And if there's some follow up information that can be circulated, I'm sure elected members would be appreciative of that. Gillian.
Yeah, hi. Thanks very much for the question. Yeah, we've been identifying over the last year to eighteen months that the absentee has been increasing, particularly around stress and anxiety. And that's where we've been concentrating our efforts. We have bi monthly meetings with the trade unions specifically about health and wellbeing and working out how we can assist and signpost our employees where it's necessary. We have joined or we have asked an organisation that's funded by the D W P, Able Futures, which allows employees to self refer for counselling and they can get up to nine months counselling. So there's a whole variety of things that we're doing and continue to work with trade unions. But we'd be happy to put a briefing together for elected members if that would help.
Thanks very much, Gillian. I'm sure that'll be appreciated. Kevin, do you want to come back in?
Yeah, convenor, I'd appreciate that. I think it'd be good to explore that a bit deeper. Given obviously that other reports we've looked at obviously reflects poorly across on mental health in a number of areas. But there's obviously another one where it appears that it's very difficult to access mental health treatment. So, you know, wondering if the Department of Working Pensions is a shortcut to that for our employees. But, you know, it's not available to the ordinary member of the public. So, you know, it seems like we could be taking up more than other people getting their fair share or qualified individuals to deal with their health matters.
Send it a little bit more like a comment, but I'll bring Gillian in perhaps just to offer a perspective. Gillian.
Yeah, it was just to clarify Able Futures is available to any person who is working, any person in the country, not just local authorities. And I know there's a lot of organisations have taken up the opportunity.
Thanks very much, Gillian. That's really helpful. And I think just the point on wellbeing generally, I know we talk about this in various forums and, you know, members across the virtual chamber will be live to this. Just last week, we were having a conversation around burnout, fatigue, you know, the challenges of working in public sector or third sector or perhaps even private sector at this point in time, with all of the pressures that are bearing down on people have an impact and we're seeing that. And I suppose from a council perspective, I think we need to be reflective of the fact that what we're also seeing is, you know, that pressure expectation as well against the backdrop of a really challenging financial backdrop. So people are being asked to do more, I suppose. But it makes it all the more difficult, I suppose, in what we can do, working in partnership with the trade unions and with other staff to provide that support at the time of need is really imperative. And I know that Gillian and your team support all of those endeavours as well. I'll just come to Daniel next. Daniel.
Thank you, Mr convenor. On page four hundred and sixteen, the targets for council tax collection for the next few years are actually below performance in twenty two, twenty three. Given that Dundee still has, for very understandable reasons around deprivation, a lower collection rate than the average across Scotland. Should these targets not be reviewed upwards? Otherwise, the targets are surely rather meaningless.
Thanks for the question, Daniel. Of course, we always want to set stretch targets. But when it comes to things like council tax, we also need to be realistic because they have an impact on the potential budget position and our outlook on the budget position. So if we overestimate or underestimate, that has an impact on the overall financial position when we come to setting the budget. So it's really important that in some of these measures, they're based upon a more accurate position. But I'll come to Robert to offer an officer perspective. Robert.
Thank you, convenor. And thank you, councillor Coleman. The last year's performance was particularly good because there was additional support provided by the government to households, which helped to get everyone off to a good start at the beginning of the year. It's not expected that that'll be replicated this year. What we're seeing is a small, maybe half a percent reduction in performance this year in figures to date, which we're working hard to try and reclaim. And what we're seeing actually is more people paying council tax over the full twelve months of the year. So perhaps we'll see an improvement at the end of the year. I think the work we have done, the way we've been working on collection and making sure that people are staying up to date with their payments is clearly paying off. Again, we're trying to be realistic about what we can achieve with the resources that are available in terms of the collection. And if we can increase that, we certainly, we certainly will do. But that's what we think at the moment is practically achievable at the moment.
I think it's fair to say, just to add, that's the in year collection data. So obviously by end return, then the figures might be different. And I think one of the things I've certainly seen through my inbox, and you might be the same councillor Coleman, is people looking for flexibility in terms of the pay arrangements for council tax, given some of the cost of living challenges people are facing. And I know that certainly my interaction with council officers with some individual cases, they've been very receptive to trying to work with people about what can they pay and how does that form, I suppose, their response to council tax. But do you have a supplementary, Daniel?
No, it's fine for me. Thank you, John.
Thanks very much. Okay, I think that's all the questions on this item. So can I take this report as agreed, please? Thank you very much. Okay, well, move on, Willie.
Yeah, thank you. Take some title seven, the chief social costs and annual report, which is for approval.
I'm going to defer to the superior, superior knowledge and expertise of Diane McCullough on this report to introduce Diane.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's because I'm well over fifty, John, years of experience and knowledge in terms of the information I've got. So, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak to us. I won't kind of go over a lot of what's in the report already. But it is our annual report. It's requirement to submit this to the Scottish Government. And we work to a template, which is why the report's always presented in the way it is. It covers all our children, our family, community justice, health and social care partnerships, social work and social work service, social care services, but also some of the strong partnerships because we do have social workers, et cetera, working in our third and independent sector. It's not an absolute in terms of everything we do, but I think every year, even I am quite surprised by just the range of work that goes on across our services and the impact and the changes which are made as we go through each year. We have moved away and are moving away from our direct response to the pandemic and much more towards business as usual approaches. However, we recognise that our population, our staffing and the way that we support those who present for assistance has had to change and adapt. And that's because we're seeing increases in demands for support and also recognising the pressures in our capacity to respond to that. We do continue to look at improving our services and take into account both the risks that are faced by those that we work alongside and those in relation to our services. We try to keep that value driven and we try to ensure that people remain at the heart of what we do. And a lot of what we do is about partnerships and collaboration. Lots of challenges facing us. We really don't understand what the national care service is going to bring. But if it comes in the way that it's being presented, we recognise that that will change potentially our models of service. The scrutiny of our services could actually change as well in terms of the approach that's being discussed at this point in time. But also even the education of social work and social care could change on the back of that. Most of the challenges that we're facing in Dundee are not unique to Dundee. There are challenges that I'm seeing all over Scotland in relation to the finance of our services and how we continue to work within a constraint in terms of the cost of our service and our delivery. But also the fact that we are struggling for recruitment. So a lot of what you're seeing in the report is about either shifting staff across our workforce or actually difficulties in recruiting, particularly into social care. And that has an impact down the line on how we deliver our services. And we're seeing much, much more complex support being needed across the piece. So we will continue to think about how we maintain our performance. And the report highlights this number of areas where we're performing particularly well, but also where we recognise that we've got need to improve. But we want to continue to do that while taking very much a trauma informed approach across the city. So thankfully, and first and lastly, I think I want to take the opportunity to thank the staff in social care and social work services. As I said, not just those managed through Dundee City Council and the Health and Social Care Partnership, but right across the piece in relation to everyone who pulls together in our city to support those most in need. They're really critical in our collective efforts to continue essential services for those most vulnerable. And they include really lifeline kind of social care services and protection for those who need it. So this report has already gone as a draft report to Scottish Government. It won't go until the final version has been agreed here tonight, but it's presented for your information and agreement. Thank you, John.
Thanks very much, Diane. And thank you for putting me in my place immediately. I appreciate those comments. But I would certainly echo and align myself with the comments at the tail end of what you said there. I think, again, somebody mentioned earlier about unsung heroes. Here's another example of the fantastic and incredible staff that are doing really important work across the city on a daily basis. I've got a few questions, so I'll come to Craig in the first instance. Craig.
Thanks, John. Thanks very much. And, you know, first of all, on behalf of my group, Diane, just to put on record that our thanks really and appreciation for the work that officers do and the work that's gone into this report. It's important to say these things publicly, I think. All too often people think, you know, they're unsung heroes. And it can be the case, but it's not generally. I think a lot of people out here do get how hard officers work and they've got a lot to, you know, a lot of challenges, shall we say. And actually, you mentioned once, this is simply a comment, you mentioned the difficulties about recruitments. And I just, I wonder, simply thinking out loud, if the uncertainty around the national care service helps or hinders this. But I'm not looking for an answer from you. My question really is regarding the community payback statistics on page four three seven. I have to say, I'm a big fan of community payback. You know, I think it does a lot of really useful work. Sending people, you know, away to incarceration forever in a day. It appeals to a certain strand in society. It actually does a lot more harm than good, in my opinion. Although at the end of the day, obviously custody is needed for certain people and certain crimes. But community payback is really a useful tool for, you know, helping people to change their ways. So big fan of it. I'm just a wee bit, you know, drawn to the fact that the successful completion of community payback orders has actually dropped some seven percent compared to the last year's figures. And I just wondered if there's any reasoning, anything you can see around that.
Thanks very much. Glenn, I'll come to you.
Thank you, convenor. And thank you, councillor Duncan, for the question. The first thing I would say is that since CPOs were introduced in legislation in two thousand and eleven, as a council, we've consistently performed above the national average completion rate, which has been around about seventy percent over that twelve year period. We've generally been above that seventy percent figure apart from two years. And obviously, one of those two years now is this year, the report's in year here. The reasons we've dropped are that the majority of breaches, the majority of people that have unsuccessfully completed an order have had unpaid work imposed during the pandemic. As a result of the disruptions caused during the pandemic in terms of strict work opportunities and such like, they've disengaged. And then post pandemic, they've struggled to reengage. So in relation to that cohort of people, we've had to breach the order, we've had to carry out enforcement requirements. The court has dealt with the case in terms of all the options available, whether that's a fine, whether that's a shot across the bows in terms of a warning to complete the extra hours remaining, whether that's a new order or whether that's in some cases custody, a short term prison sentence. But that's what we think it is. In fact, that's what we know it is. It's that cohort of people who were sentenced just before and just after the pandemic started and are disconnected and then struggle to reengage after we've recovered from the pandemic.
Thanks. Thanks very much indeed for that, Glenn. Because I think it's important to put on record that Dundee, as you correctly say, does have a good record in this field. So I was just simply seeking like an explanation as to why it's dipped, that's all. But certainly no criticism because quite the opposite, Dundee's doing very well in this field.
Thanks very much, Craig. And I know we've been joined by Neil Wallace tonight as well. So I'm sure he'll take those comments back to the team and thank them for their work as well. So I'll go to the next question. I think we've got Kevin.
Yeah, thanks. Diane, I appreciate the work that social workers do and obviously pass that on to the team as well. I think you do a very difficult job and sometimes come across the CDR side of life that others wouldn't want to have anything to do with or even try to understand. However, my question is around, it's not particularly in your report, but the questions around ADHD, medication and the shortage of that and how that's presenting to young people in particular that perhaps have got that diagnosis, but are not being allowed to get on medication to assist them. So, you know, what's, how widespread is that in Dundee? You know, what's the anxieties if that medication isn't coming in much quicker than it is? To the effect of, oh, people start to be affected soon of that lack of medication. Now, wondering what the effect is in education, because obviously some child at school that's unable to concentrate, you know, isn't absorbing the lesson that's being given. So, you know, what's the flavour for what's going on in Dundee in relation to that?
Thanks, Kevin. I'll maybe come to Diane. I know you asked about impact as well. Audrey switched our camera on, so there might be well of you from the educational point of view. But Diane.
Yes, thank you, Bailey Keenan. I don't have an absolute answer for you in relation to the full impact. What I do know though is that we have had information out from our colleagues in NHS T side explaining the position in terms of the medication and the action that they're taking in terms of trying to resolve some of that. So I'd be happy to seek some additional information and come back to you around the question that you asked, if that would be helpful.
That'd be perfect. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. That's appreciated. Audrey, anything you'd like to add, dispose from educational point of view?
Yeah, again, don't have details in front of me right now, but could get that for you. But very aware of the communication between our CAMHS colleagues, in particular in NHS T side, working with our schools, working with guidance teams, support for learning teachers and with parents. Because clearly, parents and carers are very concerned about this. And so we're looking at individual strategies. So in terms of assessment of need, if there's issues around medication, the key folks working with our children are getting around a team around a child and looking at alternative strategies to support while there's medication issues or shortages. But we could get more detail for you, John. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Kevin, you happy with that?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thanks very much. Dorothy.
Thank you. I'll just add my appreciation again to all the staff involved in delivering support to improve people's lives in Dundee and protect the most vulnerable. Thank you for all that you do. You spoke, Diane, in your report about pressures on capacity to respond. And I'm wondering how, what, you know, to what extent do recruitment issues affect that? Is this a huge issue currently?
Diane.
Yeah, thank you. I can make you happy to answer that question. So I think the position is quite variable. So we know, for example, for our social workers and children and families, they've done quite well in terms of recruiting into social work teams. We've got some vacancies across adults and continue to recruit, particularly in terms of newly qualified social workers. I can give a couple of examples of where we're seeing significant issues. So one of those might be about our support packages for adults with learning disabilities in the community. And we're recognising that while we may have accommodation for people in terms of that package of support in order to wrap around that person is becoming more difficult to achieve. So our third sector are seeking to recruit into those particular packages of support. Sometimes that's in relation to people with quite high level needs. So they might require a specialist response in relation to the care that they are provided with. And that in itself can be quite difficult, particularly if what you're talking about is a lot of newly qualified staff or staff new into that area of work who don't have that higher level of confidence and experience in terms of support. So that's one of the areas where we're identifying that that might be more difficult. In terms of our generic social care services, it is an aging workforce. It is about attracting younger people into our services in order to provide support. Councillor Duncan asked about the National Care Service. I don't think at this point that is actually something that is impacting. But I do think that people recognised during the pandemic that it was a very difficult job in which to undertake. And we know that that has had an impact on our staff. So we might see a slightly higher turnover than we would normally expect to provide. So it's absolutely about kind of building up the confidence with those who are coming forward into the work, ensuring we've got the right support for them so that we're actually getting that word of mouth out there as well as being able to retain our staff, but also to encourage new people to come into our services.
Diane, thanks very much. Okay, and Jack, you've got the last question on the second.
Oh, that's good. A question for Diane. But like that, I would like to say that the social care and healthcare staff in the communities have worked great stuff over, especially during the storm and things like that, trying to get to people that were isolated by flooding and stuff. I would just like to ask one question, well, a couple of questions. However, I'm more interested in the test of change that you referred to on page four four zero. uh that you refer to on page four four zero um looking at existing social care packages and how you've managed to recoup like nearly two thousand three hundred social care hours. Um, so I'm just wondering if you could give us more details on how you've managed to do that? Um, how these people have been identified and um who now delivers their care?
Thanks, Jack. Diane?
Yes, thank you. Happy to respond to that. Um, so I think we identified not long ago that we had a significant waiting list in terms of social care. That was partly in relation to our capacity to be able to support people. And we had a number of people who'd been waiting some time on social care packages of support. That included our internal service as well as our commissioned services, Jack. So what we did was we um had a service which was about independent living. It was a team that went out and actually worked with people to look at whether equipment could be used in relation to that service, whether the assessment was right, because sometimes we can see an over assessment of people immediately coming out of hospital until we've had a chance to assess them in their own environment and actually look to see whether or not there was alternative ways that we could deliver that support. That review enabled us to maximise people's independence, to put the right equipment in place for individuals so that they were actually able to do more for themselves or families were able more to support them, but also to review where people had been waiting to see whether or not they still needed the initial assessed level of support that might have been put in place, for example, coming out from hospital. Um, so a huge amount of work done in order to make sure that we had the right assessment, the right support and an accurate um understanding of what their needs were. That reduced our list significantly without us having to actually be um concerned about the risk in terms of individuals because it was the right support that was going into people and then actually kind of taking that forward. So it gave us a base on which to work from um when it came to actually assessing how many hours we needed to deliver at the same time as then giving people the right support that was there. So very much about promoting independence um across people with the right supports in place.
Thanks, Diane. Thanks very much. Um, as I said, I think that's the last question on this item, so very uh appreciative of all the responses to those questions. Um, can we take this item as agreed? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next report. Willie?
Thank you, convenor. Take us on title eight, our procurement report, this is for noting.
So this provides an overview and a summary of the work undertaken in twenty two, twenty three by the corporate procurement team and details of the future planned activity as well. Uh, throughout that period, and again, this is something that I think we're all very interested in terms of understanding uh the community derived benefits as well. And I know we're joined and uh Rachel, you've just appeared on the screen, Rachel Thomas, uh who is our community wealth building community coordinator, uh again, making sure that those contracts uh are all taken forward with a view of what can we uh provide or leverage for the benefit of the local community in terms of construction spend, percentage of labour, uh and all of those other factors that we're really interested in. And I think um we're always keen to see how we maximise those opportunities and that's a, a continued effort across uh a number of teams in terms of that community wealth building approach. But I will go straight to questions on the report. Michael?
Thank you, uh convenor. Um, on page four eight four, the statistics on payments of invoices within thirty days show that there's a drop from ninety five percent in twenty one, twenty two to ninety percent in twenty two, twenty three. And what's the reasons behind this? Um, and what's the current performance twenty three, twenty four?
Thanks for the question, Michael. I'll go to Paul in the first instance. Paul?
Thank you, convenor, and thank you councillor Crichton for uh the question. I can confirm that the, the slight drop in performance um aligned to the period when we are implementing uh the purchase to pay arrangements on a more robust basis. And members of the scrutiny committee will recall a previous report uh that identified improvements that had to be made to that process and been, been working and through that process with services and suppliers. But I can confirm, whilst I don't have the actual figure in front of me, um we are seeing a marked improvement in that. So we're working hard to bring that um figure up to that level um in terms of the target.
Thanks, Paul. So short term debt and uh looking to see it return to where it should be. Nice. Great. Thanks for the question, Michael. I see no other comments or questions on this report. So thank you all for your efforts in pulling this together. Can I take this as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Okay, thank you. Item nine is the community justice annual activity report, this is for approval.
Again, we've got a number of substantive reports tonight. This is another one. And given the report we were just talking about in terms of social work, uh really important to highlight uh the range of activities that have been undertaken in the last twelve months uh with the local community justice partnership reviewing that progress in the context of the new national vision uh strategy and the performance framework, of course. The report describes a number of key opportunities and challenges. Uh, again, I think we'll be live to many of them. And but also how the uh service has taken the approach forward to make sure uh that we're dealing with those as each of them arises. And that includes continuing work to reduce uh a high level of remand in short term custodial sentences and the work with partners uh to enhance the whole family approach, which I think we'd all uh agree is a really important one. Uh, are there any questions or comments on this report? You may well have asked them on the previous report, but um, no. Okay, well, can I thank uh Neil and Glen and the wider team uh for all of their efforts as well? Um, really important piece of work and uh I'll take this report as agreed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Item ten is antisocial behaviour report, this is for noting.
Again, don't think it needs any introduction, but if anybody has a particular uh question on the report before us, hopefully self explanatory. I don't want to be too keen by moving on too quickly, so I'll take that. There's no questions. Can I take this report as agreed? Thank you very much. Willie?
Yeah, thanks. Item eleven is the procurement report, this is, you're asked to agree the, the recommendations.
Yep, um again, hopefully self explanatory, new software system. No questions on this? Nope. Can I take that as agreed? Okay, thank you. And we'll move on.
And lastly, item twelve, schools fibre internet service. Again, you're asked to give the recommendations.
Yeah, I think we'd all broadly uh welcome this investment in high speed fibre internet within our schools. Any questions on the report? Nope. Can I take this as agreed? Thank you all very much. Thank you for your patience. Have a lovely week and we shall see you very soon for the next round of committees. Take care, everyone. Cheers.
Thank you.
Bye.